Even if it's a lot, it was in state state. So, August.
So, I don't know where the sheriff is, but we can easily list out those activities and we'd rather get that as well and find.
I'm doing it for clarity's sake.
Okay.
Because they don't know what that GO is.
Yeah.
This here is specific.
And it's just like the law, but what you're gonna get is if you specifically list activities, anything not specifically listed is forbidden. And then you're gonna have to call this mom, this here, whatever, the chairman, kids, and call code enforcement. I know, and then you'll get stuff on the other, and we're, I'm just telling you what's gonna happen. I don't, I don't care.
I don't need it, because I'd be damned.
That's true, fair, me too, so.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Holly, can you hear me all right? It's darn night, and I can't hear you. Can you hear me now? Is she unmuted there, Jason? Try it now, Holly, Holly.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Gotcha, okay, thank you. All right, well, welcome everybody to the regular scheduled board meeting for April 28, 2020. Not only are we kind of spread out up here at the dais and elsewhere, we've got a few participants in the audience, and we do have Zoom operational this morning, and we have a few people that's already logged in. With that being said, I'm gonna ask Jason Cook to lead the invocation, then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray.
Lord, we love you so much, and we're thankful to be a part of your kingdom. We ask you to touch our commissioners today, and God let your hand be upon this meeting. We pray for your wisdom and your guidance and your direction in every agenda item. We just pray that you would bless our nation, that you would help us during this crisis, give us wisdom to know what to do, what not to do, and we just pray that you would be with us now and let your spirit flow into this place. We give you all the glory and the praise, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Let us lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Jason. Call the meeting to order. Mr. Jones.
Right, Mr. Chairman. Don't think we have any additions or deletions, except perhaps.
Check your mic, Larry.
The closing documents.
For the property in Paxton, we'll have that available. We are gonna ask that when we get to the admin section that we move the COVID update to the end of those items, so that we can move through those shorter items in a more timely fashion and get to the discussion of the COVID situation, and take whatever time we need there.
Okay. Without objection, we'll move item number 22 to behind number 26. That way, we can take care of most of the business at hand, and then we know the update's gonna take a little time. Okay. Is there any public comment at this time concerning any agenda item? Any agenda item? I see none on the Zoom, and no one in here, so we'll move on from there. Is there any items to be removed, consent agenda, for further discussion? I see none. All right, approval of the consent agenda.
My motion to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Next up is Waste Management EAL. I have a conflict of interest, and file the proper form with the clerk, and will abstain from the vote. So, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I still voted, didn't I? That don't count. Habit, I guess. Aye, Mr. Jones administration, number 23.
Yes, sir. First item, we ask you to consider all the closing documents for the property in Paxton that we have been waiting. For those documents for some time, they were, we didn't get them till late yesterday, they were sent to each of you late yesterday afternoon or early evening. We just ask your consideration to approve those, so we can move that property forward.
Motion to approve, the chairman has signed.
Second.
A motion, second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
At four one.
Next item is request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the agreement for broadband network with SOM 1101 LLC. This is contract 19050. If you recall, we've had a lot of discussion about this project, and we, these, this company in particular, they're ready to move forward. They have presented us with an agreement. The agreement is staged over a period of time, and I think its total is 3.5 million. But that's not all due at once, it'll be, actually, some of it is subject to the ability to function as they say they are as we move forward. You approved at the last meeting the ability to secure grant, pardon me, loan funding to pay for this as we move forward, so the funding source is in place. I believe Jason and Jed and some of those folks are here, if you have any questions for them. But we would recommend that we move forward with entering this agreement, and which will advance the broadband abilities throughout the county.
Okay.
Sorry.
You'll see on your screen.
I was just gonna make clear, too, that item number 24, the board did previously authorize us to obtain the funding, but the item number 24, which is related to 23, would formalize the funding of the 3.5 million dollars.
Okay.
So, they kind of go hand in hand.
Okay. Mr. Randy Gardner is on.
Ryan Gardner. Ryan Gardner.
Well, I can't read that little beady sign they got down there. Anyway, Mr. Gardner, can you hear me all right? We're getting some feedback from something.
Greg, can you hear him? That's actually Greg, sorry.
I can hear him just fine.
Okay.
And Ryan's on as well, Ryan, Mr. Gardner's on as well.
Okay. All right. Clerk, do you need any spelling, please? All right, with, gentlemen, if y'all will individually spell your last name, first and last name for the clerk. The principals, I understand that.
We would like us to state our last person, last name, so it, my name's Greg is the first name, the last name is Wyler, W Y L E R.
All right. Okay, any comments you want to make? Go ahead.
No specific comments, but generally, it's a pleasure to be working with Walton County, to look at bringing broadband to all of the homes in Walton County, and make sure it's available, and make sure there's a good quality connection for everyone, for school, for their opportunity of education, and medical and health needs. This is a time of urgency, and we recognize that time of urgency, and so we're gonna take this very, very seriously indeed, from a time perspective.
Okay. Any comments from, or questions from the board?
Mr. Wyler, this is Commissioner Anderson. I'll be honest, I don't know a whole lot about internet, I'm an old guy, but I do know that a time like this shows how badly we need full coverage in our county, and I wouldn't be surprised if there's more and more students doing internet-based schools. And as we know, most of Walton County doesn't have internet. So, I personally am very excited about this. I can't wait to get started on it. I think it's, from everything I've researched, the technology is just what we need in Walton County. So, I'm very excited to talk to you on Zoom, and hope that I get to meet you someday soon. But I think we've got a chance here to really change Walton County for the future generations.
Okay. Anyone else? Any public comments?
Can we get Jed to come up? Can we get Jed to come up?
Jed, you gonna tell us something y'all already told us?
I can share with you a little bit what we've done since I met with you previously. Greg actually come to the Funiac, and we mounted one of these antennas that we're looking at on the water tower on Pet Coffin Road. We actually drove out about two to three miles, total non-line of sight. I even took the antenna and put it face down in the bed of the truck, and I was still getting connectivity. It's amazing technology, and we've seen it work in person. We also were able to fly out to California, to Toronto headquarters. We met with the CEO of the company there, and they explained some of the technology and what they were doing. It's very, it's amazing technology, I'll put it that way. I was very pleased with what we heard. They assured us that Greg had their full support in making this project successful, so all signs were very encouraging, and we're excited about getting this here.
When do you think we can get started?
Well, if we approve the contract today, Greg's team will start work immediately. We've already sent them some maps and different things, I know they've been preparing, hoping to get the contract awarded, so we've already done a lot of the legwork in identifying the elevated structures in Walton County, and getting them some maps to assist with that. So, they'll start the radio planning, and then they would obviously start purchasing the equipment, opening an office here in Walton County, you know, and getting ready to support the public. So, it'll take a year or two probably before it's fully implemented, but hopefully we'll get started sooner rather than later.
And just to recap, this covers 100% of the houses and 100% of the county.
Yes, sir. During contract negotiations, I was pretty firm of Walton County's wishes to hit every home in Walton County. I will give Greg and his team credit. I worked them pretty hard, and there's some penalties in there if they do not hit every home. It's a $5,000 fine after one year, and another $5,000 fine after two years for every home it does not cover, so they stepped up to the plate and agreed to those terms, so we're excited.
We are, too.
All right, any other comments from the board?
Like I said, Jed, and you've known me a long time, all your life, so, and you know I'm not internet savvy or computer savvy, but the way you explained it to me is, I feel like this is our only chance right now to fully implement internet throughout the county at a reasonable cost, because we've looked into some of the things before, and it was so expensive, as you know, and Jason knows, because y'all have kept me informed on this, but it was a price tag that I don't think we could have ever paid.
No, sir. For the technology that we're getting is very cost-effective. Some of the old proposals we had were to hit 6,500 to 7,000 homes, and that price tag was up over 15 million dollars. This is gonna hit over 25,000 homes for 3.5 million dollars. It's only possible because of the technology. It's able to do antennas that can go through non-line of sight. Again, I could get into some of the way it works, but it's way up here. But we have seen it work, and I think Greg's team's dedicated to making it work, so as long as they put up enough towers and antennas, we should be able to cover 100% of the homes, no problem.
Okay. Well, Greg, thank you for reaching out to us. We're looking forward to it. So, with that being said, and I see no other public comment, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Greg, thank you very much, appreciate you coming in this morning and showing up on Zoom.
Thank you, and I'll note that my Zoom call is on the equipment on a 30, on a 22-mile link.
Okay.
I live in Green Island, and I have three kids in online schooling doing it, two others on the way to start, so I'm just as dependent upon it as you are.
Okay.
So, it was fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Number 24, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this goes right along with the approval you just made. This provides that the county can move forward with obtaining a loan to support this contract. We'll tell you that it's not just to go get 3.5 million dollars. This is staged over time, so we'll pull the money as we need it.
Okay. All right, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing? Go ahead, Bob.
Bob Brook, B R O O K E. I know for a long time Commissioner, former Commissioner Commander was a big advocate of internet connectivity and wideband throughout the county, and I'd just like to thank her, plus all of the others that have been involved to get to this point. I think it's a great day for Walton County to have countywide internet connectivity, so thank you to the Board of County Commissioners and all the others involved.
All right, thank you. Any others? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Okay. Number 25.
At the last meeting, Commissioner Anderson asked that we come forward at this meeting with names for the South Walton Dog Park, so we're open to suggestions in your motion to name that dog park.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
After talking with a lot of the people that use that dog park and have been taking care of it, they suggested that we name it just South Walton Dog Park.
How clever.
Hey, I thought it'd be more than that, too.
Okay, well, that's one. Dory, is this, was this, this is for sure, okay. All right, here's two names that Ben proffered, Happy Tales Dog Park and Happy Tales Dog Trails. So, there's three on the table. Is there any public comment on this?
I'm surprised we have to vote on this.
Yeah, that's for sure. All right, what's the board's wishes? You got three on the table.
I make a motion, we call it South Walton Dog Park.
Second, that motion.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the last item, I think we handled initially, was the consideration of the closing documents, and you voted in favor of that.
Yeah, you got ahead of us. It's all right.
Mr. Chairman, we got it done. So, with that, unless you have further direction, we'll move to the update on the coronavirus.
Okay.
The sheriff's here, and I think Holly's on the phone, if you want to see if they've got any comments.
Yeah. Holly, can you hear me?
Hi, can, can you hear me?
Got you loud and clear. Go ahead and give us your update, please.
Okay. For the state of Florida, so far, we're reporting at 32,851 cases as of this morning. For Walton County, we're at 35 positives so far, 13 of those being males, 22 of those numbers being females. The age range is from 20 to 90 years. Still the same municipalities reporting, Miramar Beach, Santa Rosa Beach, Freeport, Defuniac Springs, Laurel Hill, which I think it shows up as Paxton because of the zip code up there. There's been a total of 587 tested, 6% of those have tested positive in our county. And I know there's been some discussion about more tests that have been done, and I feel sure that we have had some more in our county through some of the private providers, but with our system, we are showing 587 that have been totally tested. But like I said, I do feel like we've had more in our county. Just wanted to make a couple of, or give you a little, a couple of things this morning. We've gotten some information from our call yesterday that, down from the governor to the state surgeon general, that there is a recommendation for expanding testing in rural counties, and we are working very diligently on getting this done in Walton County. I'm hoping within the next week or so, we will have a community drive-through test. We're working very hard with emergency management to put that in place, that infrastructure in place. And our focus right now, as we start looking at reopening over the next month, is for us to be able to test more, really look at our contact tracing, monitor unvulnerable populations, and really continue to look at the healthcare infrastructure that we have in Walton County. And while we're doing this, it's still very, very, very important as we start to reopen in our community, is that we continue what we've learned over the last few months, and that is to continue social distancing, no mass gatherings, continue that until something is changed, continue to hand wash, wash your hands, become that hand Nazi, cover your cough, use a tissue, and then stay home if you're sick. And for those of you that are continuing to use masks, just make sure that they are clothed as you continue to use that, as you get out and about in our community. So, those are the most important things I have this morning.
Okay. Holly, can you speak to what we talked about yesterday, dealing with the hospital capacities?
Specifically about the numbers?
Yes, I, maybe I can refresh your memory, that there's a surge capacity of about 100 for Sacred Heart and about 50 for Health Mart, based on my notes from yesterday.
Yes, yeah. One of the things you could do as a community, anytime you want to look at the licensed bed capacity for any of our facilities, you can go on the ACHA website, and this is for anybody that wants to look at this, there's a header at the top that says, "Find a Facility," and then, of course, you click on that, put the information in, it will give you what your hospitals or your nursing homes, long-term care facilities are actually licensed for, so those numbers are on there. And then the hospital has to make a determination on what they can surge to, and, you know, there's different ways to look at that. For some hospitals, if it's a huge issue that we've got going on, just to take COVID-19, and you look at what your surge capacity could be, and that's basically putting people in the halls and closets, wherever you can put them if there's that kind of a need, but safely take care of an individual. And I believe they're able to surge to a decent number, but I do want to say, as we look forward, as we look towards reopening for our community, we really do need to look at our infrastructure that we have in the south end specifically, and it could be, of course, in the north end, but specifically as the south end starts to reopen, as short-term rentals starting to open up in our community.
Okay, thank you. Do you have, if you gave it earlier, I missed it, how many we got hospitalized for this?
We have about two individuals right now.
And at best I remember, six was the highest we had at any one time.
Yes, I believe, actually, I think we had about four at one time, that was our high.
Okay. Very well. Any questions from Holly, from the board?
Ask her about the one day, one time a day reports.
Uh, yeah, the dashboard is only being updated once a day? Is there a reason why they went from two to one?
That I cannot answer. We just actually got the information over the weekend, that the data would be scrubbed, what we call scrubbing the data, making sure that, you know, we may say a person lives in Walton County, we find out they're in a nursing home in Estambia County, that's where we come in with our contact tracing and scrub that data. So, that's being scrubbed once a day, and then that information is coming out around, I believe, 11 o'clock, I believe that's Eastern Standard Time, but it is one time a day, and I think now because some of the, and this is just me, I feel that because of what's been going on, the numbers have started to decrease across the state. I mean, we're still having some increase, but some of the communities are seeing more of a decrease. I think they're a little bit leveled off, that that information is only coming out once a day to be scrubbed, and then it's put on the dashboard then.
Okay, do you know if the ones that are hospitalized are residents of some nursing home or assisted living facility?
They are not.
They are not, okay. All right, any other questions for the board? Thank you, Holly.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Holly, it's Larry. Just wanted to say publicly a thank you for your diligence in providing me, which in turn I'm able to provide commissioners, the number of cases seven days a week, has been twice a day, and understand moving back to one time a day, but I do want to say thank you for your hard work and efforts to make sure we stayed up to date on those numbers.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I do want to take the time, just for a second, and thank everybody in our community for working so well, but I also want to thank my staff, because a lot of this, I don't do all this. You know, we have a very dependable, responsible, and very smart staff, and I appreciate them tremendously, and I will continue to appreciate them as the coming days come around, because we know this isn't the end, we've got lots of work to continue to do in public health, and it takes all of us working together to get this done in our community.
Okay, thank you. Holly, one thing, I just noticed that in my notes, concerning the testing that we talked about, I know you're trying to get as many tests, as much testing as you can here in the county with the drive-throughs, what have you. Can you speak to the conversation you had about, with Stone Labs, about doing the test?
Well, that's in negotiation, so I can't really speak specifically about where we are with it, but it is in negotiation to work. I'm hoping that we're able to get some test kits coming down from the state and go through that route, but I do have a Plan B, and that Plan B does include Stone Labs. So, as we move forward, I'll get that information out to you just as soon as possible, so the community will know.
Okay, thank you, Holly. Any other questions? All right, is the sheriff available?
I'm behind the post, okay.
The way I like it.
Uh-huh.
Good morning. Commissioner, can I, can I touch on the testing for just a second, because I had a pretty interesting conversation yesterday, and if Ms. Holt's on the line, she can kind of verify this for me. We actually have, or Sacred Heart specifically, has rapid testing ability in South Walton that is, instead of days, like seven, eight days, they literally can do it inside of an hour. The problem is they don't have reagent, right? So, the chemical that actually helps perform that test, that's the issue, that the reagent there has been, you know, there's a shortage of that, and so that's all about capacity, right? As that comes more online, as more of that is made available, we're gonna be able to dramatically increase the amount of testing and how quickly that testing can go. So, there's two separate entities here, there's the public healthcare system, right, the Health Department, and what they're doing, and there's the private side of this, the hospitals, Sacred Hearts, individual doctors. I had a good conversation with a doctor yesterday who said, you know, one of the things, and I think we've all seen, you probably all got these calls, somebody wants to sell you something in the middle of this crisis. I know you find that hard to believe, but that is actually going on. I see all y'all smiling, so you probably got the same calls I have. But interesting, those tests should be about 50 bucks, give or take, the whole, the whole package of it, as I understand, and I'm outside of my scope, so Holly can certainly correct this, I'm just going to, as the doctor related it to me, but they're trying to sell their thing. But they're trying to sell their things for 165, right? So there's the problem. You're getting three times the price. But I, as I understand it, as soon as that reagent is made more available here locally, you'll have a much more expanded and quite a bit faster, because it's still taking us, I'm not sure it's taken Holly, but that's, as I understand, around five to seven days in some regard. So it's still taking a while. But it's literally the reagent to help perform the test. It's not just the swab kits and those things. So that's interesting to know that we have that capacity to do that, once that reagent is brought online. And obviously, there's a manufacturer spin-up date. So we should be getting somewhere, I hope relatively quickly, that'll speed that up. Interesting that we're finding a lot more of the antibody test available, where individuals can go to their private doctor and request this. And again, that's, I don't know whether, Ms. Holt, I have to speak to that, well, not the Health Department actually is doing that now. But I've talked to several of the private doctors that said, hey, we are, we're available to do this. If you think, if there's a reason to believe that you've had it, you know, not just because I want to know. And, you know, at some point, it'll be just like the flu shot, where you can go ahead and find out if you've had it. But pretty interesting that we have that kind of capacity here in Walton County, as soon as that reagent's made available. I'll circle back to the one thing that's probably pressing, if your phones are like mine, they're blowing up because of what's happening, what's going on with businesses, where are we at on reopening, what is going on there. You know, the bottom line, as the commission knows, the governor's executive order preempts so much of what we're actually dealing with. It's really, a lot of it's out of our hands, and we're bound on waiting to see what actions he takes. And unless something has changed in the last 15 minutes, we have seen no, no report from them. So, you know, and I joke about this, but I, working in Tallahassee, or working for government 27 years, you know, it's got to be thirsty at 5:00, because that's just the way these things work. We continue to hear the same kind of things, that there is going to be a structured reopening, based on what part of the state. But I filled it, as I know you have, I filled it calls and emails this morning about individuals' business that are planning to take certain steps next week. And they go, what can we do to be in compliance? How are we in compliance with X? And I can't give them that answer, because quite frankly, I don't have that information. And I don't want to mislead people about that. I have speculation, but I think until we know something, until we know something from the governor's office, we're really in a bind there, from that standpoint.
Well, I agree with you on that, Sheriff. The unfortunate thing, and I hope it doesn't happen, I hope he jumps out ahead of this thing and not wait to 5:00 Thursday afternoon to release what he wants to do, starting May 1st. You're right, there's a lot of, we get a lot of emails and phone calls about, why don't you do this, do that? And it's beyond our authority to do so. And I don't know how many times I said it Thursday, but it still keeps coming up. So anyway, there's some things that we've got to settle on today, and that's this ordinance, concerning that. And hopefully you can hang around. I, I've read the, and I think commissioners, you all have also been provided a copy of the resolution. Hang on, give me a second. But one thing that Sid and I had talked about, and I don't know if she had a chance to get back with you or not, Sheriff Holly, but it is under 4C, is alluding to an executive order number that, quite honestly, I can't remember all the executive order numbers and what they entail. So I ask her to, or asking the board too, to also maybe consider specific things that would be in line with that order, but somebody from, that may be coming in here, may not have any idea what EO 2091 is. So if we try to just identify some of them that are inconsistent with what's in that executive order, instead of just leaving it as an order. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Sid to discuss this.
Yes, sir, thank you. So just a couple of things, just for, for the public and for the commissioners to kind of understand the procedure we're going to use for the regulations on the beach. Previously, whenever we shut down the beach or closed the beach, we had done that through an emergency ordinance. One of the main reasons we had done that was for ease of enforcement, but also to extend the time to April 30th, to be in line with the governor's executive order, which was a stay-at-home order. But we also have the ability to adopt a lot of regulations through our local state of emergency, which we have had in place, I believe, since March 16th. So an option, and I think that, and the way I've drafted this, and I think that this will be a good option, because the commissioners mentioned at our last meeting that you'd like the ability to kind of review this periodically. So with our local state of emergency, under Florida statutes, it's only effective for a seven-day period. However, the board can authorize the chair, and we have a chain of command under our local state of emergency plan, our local emergency plan, where the chair, Larry, or others can sign an extension of a local state of emergency on the seven-day expiration. And whenever the board first entered local state of emergency, you gave Commissioner Chapman that authorization. So I think that it would probably be best to handle it this way, rather than through another ordinance, which would be a little bit more difficult for us to change quickly as circumstances change. But this local state of emergency would technically only be in effect from April 28, 2020, to May 5, 2020. But what I would like the board to do as part of their motion is to explicitly give Commissioner Chapman the authority to sign an extension on May 5th, till our next meeting on May 12th. Again, he already has that authority under our local emergency plan, but I just want to make that explicitly clear, because it was the goal of the commission to have these regulations in effect to May 12th, and then we would reevaluate them at that time. So the regulations on the beach can be found on paragraph four. And I tried to get the discussion that we had, but I know that there might be some areas where we could clarify that. And we can easily do that today as part of our motion. So all permits for vending on the beach will be suspended. Those have been suspended for several weeks now. We had done that before we closed the beaches. All special events on the beach, which are defined under our Beach Activities Ordinance, so is vending, would be suspended as well. And again, we've been doing that for quite a while now, as well, even before we closed the beach. And then paragraph C, 4C, reads currently, "Individuals on the beach shall limit their activities to those authorized by or reasonably related to the essential recreational activities contained in Executive Order 20-91." That's the governor's executive order on stay-at-home. But what I can do, if it's, if it's better, and this is the problem with lawyers writing things, is usually it's not as clear as it could be, we can list out those activities, and I'm certainly fine with that. So in the executive order, those recreational activities are walking, biking, hiking, fishing, hunting, running, or swimming. And then at the meeting, Commissioner Chapman listed specific activities, which were very much in line with that, but slightly different. His activities that he mentioned at the previous meeting we had last week was walking, jogging, fishing, swimming, paddle boarding, surfing, and then we went into canoes and boating, so we could kind of just say boating, and sunbathing. So we could easily come up with a list if you guys wanted. But again, Commissioners Chapman's last time, and I'm sorry, you know, the discussion at the end of the meeting, we did have that list, but we also had some discussion about referencing the executive order. So we can handle it either way that you feel is clearest. And then also, finally, paragraph 4D, it lists that are, makes it explicit that "social distancing guidelines from the CDC must be followed, so no groups larger than 10 and spacing of six feet apart." And just to be clear, a violation of any of these provisions in paragraph four, just like in our emergency ordinance, would be a second-degree misdemeanor, or punishable by a second-degree misdemeanor.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, well, we'll start down here with Tony.
I've got a question. Of course, I've had a lot of vendors calling, wanting to get an idea of when we allow them on the beach. But we have some specific vendors that don't actually vend on the beach. They carry like paddle boards to people's houses. And they don't carry them on the beach, they just drop them off at their houses. How would, how would that be affected?
Hang on one second, and I'll pull up the definition of vending in the Beach Activities Ordinance. We can see if that would be an issue. I don't believe it would, because I want to say that our definition specifically relates to vending on the beach, but we can look into that and see. Give me just a few minutes.
And, you know, I know we've got to be super careful with this. And are we going to, I know the other day, we, Mr. Chairman, you said, sunbathing. Are we going to keep that in the, in the list of things that are allowed?
I am, I just proffered that out. That's the board would make that.
I mean, it's, we've got to be super careful what we do, I know that. But, you know, we also have to look at this on a daily basis, almost, certainly a weekly basis, to, to see how it is, to, to, I notice we have a vendor out in the audience, and I'm sure he'll want to talk, but as quickly as we feel it's safe, we need to get the vendors back on the beach.
Well, I think that was one of the reasons I stated this. If we implement this, we will redress it every two weeks. Now, that is, if everything stays basically status quo, the way it's going now. But if something was to happen between now and May 12th at our next meeting, then I would be calling for an emergency meeting, so we can discuss what actions that we may need to do. Giving it a two-week period, or in this case, 12 days, and see what happens, see what kind of reactions we get. Do we have a spike? Do we have more cases?
Yeah, and, and one of the things, and I've told this to vendors, is one of the things that we're all concerned with is that we start doing things too early, and we ruin the whole summer. If things are good, if things are looking safely, we can safely look at things and say, okay, it's not. I think it would be beneficial for the county, for the sheriff, and certainly for the vendors, if there's any way possible, we could have a week or so at least before Memorial Day. So we can see how they're doing, the ones that are doing it right, the ones that aren't doing it right. And I truly believe there'll be very few of them that do it wrong. Most of our vendors are professionals. Our regional beach accesses are going to be manned by the Beach Vendors Association. So they can make sure that everything is, is good. But these people are hurting just like everybody else. And, but I want to make sure that it's safe for them to go down there.
Well, Tony, I do too. That's why I was proffering this first 12 days, let's see what happens. And if it looks like it stays status quo, we can loosen up a little bit more. And a little bit more as we progress through this whole process. And it, and I got a feeling it's still going to be in address in November and December, this thing, until they get a shot to give us, probably going to be around for a while.
Real quickly, if I can, just answer Commissioner Anderson's question about, sorry, about the vending. So it would depend on the particular circumstances of the vendor's business model. So I can't answer it with a blanket answer, but it, under our definition of vending, that delivery-type service could qualify as vending under the Beach Activities Ordinance. So depending on the circumstances, that may, may or may not be prohibited. I'm sorry, I can't be more clear than that.
Sheriff, I know you want to.
You certainly weren't clear, so.
I know you want to say something, but give me a second.
Yeah, it could be, so if you wanted to allow that, we probably need to make it explicit, one way or another.
Okay. Trey, you got anything you want to allow right now?
No, I'm, no, not right at the moment.
Okay. Ms. Nipper?
Yes. Sheriff, how do you feel about if we, when we do this, I'll call it a soft opening? Alcohol, no alcohol, do you think that'll make a difference as far as?
You know, Commissioner, kind of my thought is a little similar to the vendors in regard that, I don't really have, I mean, I don't have really an opinion on that, to be quite frank with you, because I think there's nothing in and of itself that is problematic, other than it's just, it's just people, right? I mean, so I don't see any reason to change that from our standpoint. And that's kind of the same way I was going to proffer about whatever you do with the vendors. That really is not from my standpoint, that's, that's no more, no more problematic to me. That's really a health consideration you guys have to make on whether, you know, whether that, whether that makes sense. And quite frankly, once you're outside of a state emergency, we're rarely in the vendor business. That's just not something we do a whole lot of from there. But, so I mean, I think we can manage whatever rules you put down in regard to that, we'll find a way to work with. I don't think the alcohol, because I think we could deal with the alcohol on just a case-by-case basis, which is pretty much how we do it now, quite honestly.
And are, I'm sure you've been in touch with Oaklus and Bayes, Sheriff, and how have things been going for neighbors left and right?
It's been an interesting time, right? I mean, because what happened isn't kind of what we anticipated happening, is that window means that's when everybody's trying to go in, and they're all jamming in that, that one period of time. I think their opinion of it is that once this short-term rental is off, that they're just going to get pounded in that window. So they, they may, I'm not speaking for Bay or Oaklus County, they may very well open up the whole beaches, because they just can't manage that many people coming in at one time. It gets to be counterintuitive. It doesn't solve the problem, right? So right now, it's just, it's just a matter of dealing with pretty much locals, for the most part, right? And then what that looks like if, you know, 50,000 people come in this short period of time. So I, my, that's a long way of saying this, I think ultimately, they're going to have to open that up there as well.
Well, if Channel 13 reported this morning, there's a couple of them over in Bay County that are meeting, I think, Thursday to open up the beaches, not have it restricted hours, they're just going to open it up.
Right.
And that might be because everybody came in at the same time.
You know, there's just those things that sound good in principle, right? It's, hey, we'll just do this, but then the practical application looks a little different. I don't know what Mr. Tuss has seen, or what you have heard in regard to people planning so, to come. I just know anecdotally that what we're starting to see is people are banking on they're coming from across. I mean, I saw this morning in Missouri, all these places coming from tags that I know are not here, just, just normally visiting. They're, they're banking on coming. Keep in mind, there is still a quarantine order for every one of those folks, which, that's why it has to be dropped. Those things have to go together, they have to sync up. We, Commissioner Nipper, I want to address this, because you and I kind of spoke about it briefly. I said that we would, we have a continuity of operations plan at the sheriff's office, right? As I'm sure you probably do as well, for really more dramatic situations as well. We also have the contingency plan of what we're going to do from the sheriff's office standpoint, which is different than the board, but I know I had a chance to talk to the chair and the county administrator, and it sounds like you all are working on that as well too. And we're, we're trying to partner with that to make sure that what we do makes sense and follows what, you know, that we're working together in the way we do it. So I appreciate the chair and the county administrator reaching out and trying to make sure that we, we match up on these things.
Okay, good.
One more, I got a lot of emails basically asking how to enforce the social distancing. We've got, can you please, just for our residents, to make it feel a little bit more comfortable? Because people, like you said, they are coming.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, 100%, and I think that's a really a good question. Because if there, if there's one thing I understand, that people will hear the part of this that they want to hear when I say it. So I got to be, I try to be very careful when I say this. What we're trying to do is a reasonable, oh, excuse me, a reasonable approach to doing this. Again, if you and your family are here, and you're Walton County, you live in Freeport, and you go to the beach, and it's a mom and three kids, and the kids are sitting next to you, there's not going to be a deputy sheriff pulling a kid, you sit over here and you sit over there. However, just to be clear, you're going to, we're going to get those calls going, you're not doing anything about these people sitting there. Well, the truth is, you're never going to know where they rode here. We're going to know. And so it's kind of confirmation bias. If you think we're letting everybody get away with it, that's what you're going to see. The other side of it is, we have to be practical. So to the public, I would say this, just understand that a deputy sheriff, and I would assume a code enforcement officer, or whoever else is involved in this, may ask you, they just say, hey, did you guys ride together? What did you, relationship? If you're family and you rode together and those kind of things, then clearly, there's no need to separate those people. However, you know, this is, what's that expression? There's a difference between what you can do and what you should do. So if you want to come and sit down next to Mr. Jones, just to aggravate him, or you, you don't, you think this is all an internet conspiracy, and so you're going to do what you want to do, and you're going to go sit at Mr. Jones, because you don't care, and you don't even know him, yeah, we're going to have to address that. We're going to ask you to move, we're going to ask you to do a little bit of distance and those kind of things. So I mean, really, the general rule of thumb for people So, I mean, really, the general rule of thumb for people is you're going to have to work to have a problem with us, with this. I mean, you're going to take it upon yourself that you are, you know, you, you want to be, you're trying, trying to prove a point. But the general public, your deputy sheriffs are going to treat you with courtesy and professionalism. They may ask you, please don't take that the wrong way if they do ask you, because generally speaking, we're going to get a call. That's the way this is going to work. Uh, the deputies that are on the beach, we're, we're telling them to be courteously proactive, if that makes any sense. So, to the public, just say this, we may ask you, that doesn't mean you have to move, we're not trying to separate families, we're just trying to be reasonable and within the spirit and intent of the law. Did I, do I feel like I answered you well?
Yes, thank you, Sheriff.
Annie, you got anything?
Um, is there any problem with, uh, well, the vendors is, is one thing, but the sunbathing, you got trucks and ATVs and all these things on the beach, is that, does that give you any heartburn or?
No more, no more than usual. I mean, do, do, I mean, listen, we've run over somebody before, so we have had these, we have to have these problems, you know, full disclosure. Uh, yes, I wrote a check for that, by the way. But no, that's, that's the normal, that's the normal course of diligence from our, from our standpoint. So, yeah, we need to be careful, we need to be courteous, but that's, that's just part of it, unfortunately.
What about, what about, uh, wearing masks? Is that something that we could encourage or put in the rule or whatever?
So, you know, that's a, so that's a great question, right? Because one of the things that we are trying to answer every step of the way in our own office, you know, whether that's animal control or the jail or about, who should be wearing masks, who shouldn't be wearing, what's your personal, you know, responsibility, what's your personal engagement? The, the rules we've tried to adopt is to follow the, the CDC guidelines on this, and a lot of it for us has to do with whether or not there is an indication or reason that a mask is necessary based on the information we have, right, upfront. The other part of that is, we're, from a sheriff's office standpoint, we're already going to be violating the, the six, the social distance. I mean, we try, but that's not the business we're in. So, it, that makes it more difficult. There is immediately going to be bodily contact between a deputy sheriff and some other people, just like the people we have riding each other. So, we, what we've said for our deputies, and, and you guys are familiar, we passed out about 4,000 masks to citizens this last week. Um, it, you know, there, and there's, Commissioner, you know, there's two ways of looking at this. There are people that mad that we sent deputies to give away free masks, right? So, well, you didn't do this, this way. And so, I, I think a lot of that's about personal responsibility as far as a overall policy for us. We've left that to a deputy's discretion with the understanding that they have to follow the guidelines themselves. So, if I were to encroach on Mr. Jones's personal space, absent authority to do so, then yeah, I think at that point, you, you need to be wearing a mask. I think so. So, but we're not going to policy, we're, we're going to follow it according to the CDC guidelines, is our plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
I'm going to leave if you don't need me, I've got some stuff.
I think we're, okay. Appreciate it. Um, Jay?
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Holly when we get done with Jay.
Given us an idea of where we at as far as numbers or anticipated numbers?
So, occupancy numbers really haven't changed much from when I reported to the board last week. It's only been about, what, five days? So, we're looking at like 1% or 2% increases over the next, uh, four weeks. I suspect, uh, people are probably waiting to see what the board does today in means of opening up the beaches, and also what the governor does with the short-term rental ban. I think that's the big question mark right now of, uh, what is that going to look like in the next few days? Um, is he going to do away with that, or is he going to extend that? And so, I, I think people are just waiting probably another week before they book their trips, and then depending on what the board action is today, and what the governor does in the next couple of days, I think we could certainly see an increase in these occupancy numbers within the next probably three days to a week.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Jay? All right, thank you, but hang tight.
Okay, and then one thing to consider, uh, is, uh, driving on the beach permits.
Yeah, so, um, so currently, the, uh, only action the board has taken regarding driving on the beach, um, was to extend any current, uh, permits. We extended those until August 1st, is that right, Larry? So, if you currently hold a driving on the beach permit, it was extended until August 1st, whether that's grandfathered or lottery. And we did that to reduce the contacts coming in. We also delayed the yearly lottery, uh, to reduce the contacts of people coming into the administration office. So, that was one action we took. Whenever we closed the beaches, just because we closed the beaches, no one was allowed to drive on the beach because they weren't allowed to enter the beach. But once our, um, emergency ordinance is lifted, people, there will be no restriction to driving on the beach.
Okay.
If, if you want to address that, we need to address it in this document. But as it is right now, once our emergency ordinance, closing the beach is lifted, driving on the beach, if you have a valid permit, would be allowed, you know, as it was before.
Okay.
But you would be limited to the activities that the board decides once you get there.
Okay. Hand-in-hand with what Jay is talking about, and I had a brief conversation with him this morning, also had a conversation with Louis, uh, and through emergency management, and I think the, uh, PIOs collectively have, uh, come up with a list of things that we need to put out. Now, I think their thought was that we wait till May 1st to do it. But my opinion is, it's something I think needs to be put out now specifically, and I'm going to ask Louis, remember that list you showed me? Would you come up here and proffer it for the rest of the board? I think what it does is it tells those, this thing ain't going, if we, everything opens up May 1st, it ain't really open because there's going to take a lot of time, but he, to get it ramped back up. But he's got that, and in conjunction with that message, I've asked, uh, TDC, Jay, to also utilize his resources, his media outlets and whatever, to bombard the same message to all these, uh, bed tax collectors so they can, and most of what he's told me, most of them agree that they'd be willing to pass that type of information on to anybody that's looking for a rental. But Louis, if you will, touch that, that list. Oh, I'm sorry, hang on, I'm sorry.
Um, Holly?
Holly, can you hear?
I can.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, as fluid as everything has been, where are we, where do we stand today on wearing masks if you can't maintain your six-foot distance from social distancing?
I'm sorry, all I heard is, um, where do we stand with wearing masks? Would you?
If you can't maintain the six-foot social distancing.
What we have is what, of course, the CDC has, has put out there on their website. And I will tell you that we are doing it in the health department. We, if we are not able to maintain our six feet, we are wearing, uh, basically, there are surgical masks, but cloth masks are the same. So, we're doing it in-house, and, uh, it is something that you, as a board of county commissioner, could implement if you wanted to across the county, but I'm not sure the enforcement piece, and I know the sheriff's already left about that. Um, but the suggestion is from CDC, if you cannot maintain that six feet between each other, um, then you need to wear some type of a cloth-covered mask. But it doesn't do us any good if I wear the mask and you do not, um, because it, it's keeping what I've got in, and it's keeping what you have in, so we're not transferring our germs to each other. But that, that's the main thing I want to say, it's not doing me any good if you don't wear a mask and I wear a mask. We all have to work together to wear these masks.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure we know, because I'm getting a lot of emails, whether it's a suggestion, can we, can we make it mandatory? Um, and just wanted to know where the CDC was today. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. All right, Louis, go ahead.
Uh, Lou Savela, Public Information Manager, S V E H L A, for the record. Uh, yes, sir, our public information office, Jick, has been putting together information specifically for the purpose of putting out to, uh, bed tax collectors and visitors. So, what we're looking at is, uh, giving a couple of different things. One, what they need to do to plan ahead. Uh, so, some of the bullets are bringing your own supplies that we may or may not have here with the infrastructure, which is hand sanitizer, disinfectant wipes, those kind of things they need to bring with them. Uh, bring any face masks that they have, so when they are interacting and can't maintain that, they can adhere to those guidelines. Um, we're telling them to bring their own groceries and own food and all of that kind of stuff because of the infrastructure here, making sure, uh, that, you know, they're available to get that. Uh, we're mentioning the restaurants, may or may not be open, plan to have delivery or pickup, uh, or, or limited access to any restaurants, so plan to be eating at home with their meals. Telling them, you know, about the, uh, social distancing that's required, that will be the beach or wherever it happens to be. Uh, so, we're working with, uh, all of us, there's, uh, probably eight agencies that work in my Jick, uh, from the Constitutional Sheriff's Office, all of us, and trying to put together the best information. Uh, the Health Department has put some information there, South Walton Fire, um, about no bonfires, those kind of things. So, we're going to put this information out, um, in, in the hopes that the bed tax collectors also then give that to the visitors and let them know what we're doing. So, it's, it's actually going to be a one-sheet that they will be able to send, they'll be able to post, they'll be able to give when people walk in, uh, but really let them know what to expect when they, you know, when they come in here.
Okay. Um, like I said and told you, uh, Friday morning, I think, is late to do it, uh, because we, honestly, we still don't know 100% what the governor's going to do Friday. But, uh, the assumption and the scuttlebutt is, it's going to open it up to some degree. I don't know where and how much. So, but to get that message out, they might prefer to wait to August to come down here in lieu of, in the next two weeks, because as it's reported nationally, the food supply chain is broken right now. There's a lot of, that's got to be done in that regard to get those supplies to these stores or anywhere else. Uh, somebody mentioned one store in Glendale, I think it was, a new one up there. There's nothing there, it's empty. Uh, the wife went out to do a little grocery shopping the other day, she couldn't get stuff at Publix in Freeport because they were empty. She found it at Walmart, but they, each had different stuff, so you were traveling 18 miles in each direction to try and, uh, accommodate what you need. So, I, I just, um, throw that out there for discussion for the board and see where we go from there.
And to say, I spoke with Jay this morning, one of the good things about this information is it can change. So, we can put information out today that states this and push out the bed tax collectors digitally and those kind of things. And if the governor takes certain actions or certain thing to happen, we can bolster and enhance that information as well. Uh, so, we're certainly at the ready, uh, emergency management, supporting what we're doing with, with this to, uh, to be able to put out whatever information you would like out.
Okay. Jay?
I.
Can we get this, can we get this out on y'all's Facebook page and, and the?
I was going to ask for some clarification on that from the board, so.
I, I think the widest distribution possible would be the best, including websites, Facebook.
So, we could push it out socially.
Email blast.
Uh, we could also do some digital marketing with this messaging, if the board would authorize me to do that, um, to, to what Lou was just referencing, I mean, that's what the message would be, is it, it's not your normal vacation in South Walton, and this is what the new normal is. And we can have all those guidelines, the orders, the ordinances, all that on there. So, this is what your beach vacation's going to look like.
I would stress.
Be prepared, bring, bring provisions with you.
I would stress the provisions because that could, um, you know, before we closed, we had problems, they emptied the stores and, and that not only impacts our visitors, but that impacts our locals.
Yeah, very much so. Jay, Mr. Chairman, if I might, uh, I think it's a good idea what, what we're doing to get it out, out to the bed tax people. I'm wondering, how does that work with the Airbnbs?
Well, you know, I mean, if, we can send it out to everybody who's in our system. Now, I'll just say, that's not every, you know, um, it, it's most bed tax collectors, but there are some who don't pay the bed tax. I mean, I'll just be honest there.
I bet there's not many after hearing the clerks, people say what they do to collect.
They do a good job. Uh, I will say, the clerk sent out an email for us about two weeks ago, uh, asking people if they want to receive information from the TDC on updates and what's going on, uh, for them to sign up. And we had 44 new bed tax collectors sign up with us. So, I was very encouraged by that. So, people are interested in hearing from us and what's going on, relaying the information of what the board is doing, the actions y'all are taking. So, I was very encouraged by that. So, um, we, we have quite a few people that we can tap. Um, and in all honesty, if we need to get the clerk to send out a message as well, they've been really willing to work with us in getting messages sent out to, uh, the bed tax collectors directly.
You need a motion about?
I was going to ask, Sid, do you need a motion or just direction from the board?
For Jay's marketing?
Yeah.
We need a motion specifically for that.
I like the motion that we use all, all means available to get the message out, including digital.
With the digital marketing.
So, I mean, it's, it's digital, social, and we have some billboards in South Walton, we can use those, where we can have a message for, you know, updates, and we can have a, a, a unique URL for that, so we can track that. Um, so, we, we can use that, we can use our text messaging program that we use for the beach flags, we can push messages out on that as well.
Use what you got, use what you got. We don't have to.
Any means necessary, any means available.
Motion. Got a second?
I'd like to add, I'd like to add with a positive spin on that, too.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Good deal.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, one thing I would suggest is that I certainly agree with moving this information forward, um, but I think part of it needs to be, um, there are plenty of restaurants open, you're going to have to bring it back home to eat it.
Exactly.
But, you know, we don't, I don't think we need to encourage folks to bring their own food. Uh, I'd like to see us support those restaurants that have been through the struggle and will continue, even if it's a carryout or a pickup basis. So, if, with boards' indulgence, they would include that, uh, in that message so that it doesn't appear that we're going to go down there and there's no place to eat. They can eat pretty much at their favorite restaurants.
Well, they ain't what, I didn't get, ain't what I'm trying to say here, Mr. Jones.
I understand.
What I'm saying is, you better bring your toilet paper, because that's one thing you could not find when the wife went the other day.
I understand.
You know, so, you, paper towels, toilet paper, disinfectants, because it's hard to find them things. So, I, I'm not saying you, you can't eat out, I'm just saying there's some commodities you better bring with you because they're in short supply.
Well, as, as Commissioner Nick said, you know, let's spin the positive side where we can, and that would include, uh, supporting those, um, restaurants that have, that have been staying open.
But I, I do think, like milk, I mean, there's a lot of commodities that people use that they don't go to a restaurant for.
That's correct.
And Publix.
Yeah.
And Dollar General, all of them are empty for the most part.
And if I could.
And, and if we don't tell people to bring that stuff, like I said, that not only impacts the visitors, that impacts the locals.
Sure. And, and if I could, to Larry's point, we do have information, um, you know, who's open, who's closed as far as restaurants right now, and we keep that updated. We're in constant contact with our partners, so we have all that on our website.
All right.
And, and maybe it's the things that's, that you can do when you get here, right?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do we talk about a date to get this out?
Date to get what out?
As soon as possible.
This message?
Yes.
Immediately is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we have a call this afternoon. Is it one o'clock, Lou?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a call at one o'clock this afternoon with all the PIOs. And we'll finish based on what y'all's actions are today and we'll incorporate that. And then we'll get pushing this out today.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? I got one hand raised here, but I don't know if that's in regards to this or not. I don't know who it is. The last four digits, nine, two, three, three, star nine. Please identify yourself.
Uh, my name's Denise Conley. I'm from Pittsburgh. We're coming down in two weeks and I was just wanting to hear what was going on. That's all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, okay, we got a motion and a second in reference to the messaging going out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. All right, let's get back to the, uh, the resolution concerning, uh, our action to be taken from here forward or beginning May 1st, correct? All right, so we've heard and had the opportunity to read it. Do I have a motion?
And just to be clear, if we do want to change the list of activities, we can try to put that in the motion and I can help you guys with that if we need to.
Okay.
And to that end, I would ask you to consider, do you wish to allow driving on the beach, which absent some, um...
It would be allowed.
Exclusion, it would be allowed, yeah.
I, I...
I personally don't, the whole idea to have these beaches open is for health reasons. We can't, this is not a normal vacation. This is not a normal summer.
So vacationers aren't allowed to have a permit to drive on the beach?
Right, you're right. I just...
Well, I think, I mean, being that Grayton's the only beach we allow driving on.
Also, it's the only beach.
The only beach for launching, but, uh, I think we need to allow driving on the beach in Grayton. There's a lot of people that are elderly there that that's their only access to the beach is, is driving down there. Visitors don't have driving permits. Only property owners have driving permits, so.
Well, Sid, do you think it's, think it's necessary to put that in the, the ordinance? Driving on the beach is permitted? It's already a permitted activity?
Right, no, it, if you take no action different than what we've got here, it will be allowed. If you want it not to be allowed, we need to put that in here.
I was just afraid if we're trying to get people to social distance and then we've got cars, but...
It was, so... Sorry, Commissioner Higginson, so to be clear, if anyone drives on the beach, they're still going to be governed by whatever regulations we adopt under paragraph four. So they're still going to be limited by whatever activities you decide and the social distancing provisions.
Okay.
For clarity, Mr. Chairman, the way is equal.
It's written and we're interpreting it, or the resolution is that the no vending provision applies to private beaches as well as public beaches.
That's correct.
Okay. It's on the record for clarity.
That is correct. Okay, need a motion?
I may make the motion that we approve the resolution with the change that the chairman spoke about, that we list the, and was it four?
C.
C?
Four C.
That we list those activities.
Do you want to go with Commissioner Chapman's list from last week? And I can read that out to you.
I thought that was what we agreed.
Okay.
You can read it back.
Yep. So walking, jogging, fishing, swimming, paddle boarding, surfing, boating, sunbathing.
That's it.
That's, we had, we had that list of four C.
Okay.
And spell it out. So that's, that's my motion.
Second.
We got a second. Okay, motion and a second. Now it's a public comment. Is anybody in the room that wish to speak? The gentleman behind Bob Brooks raised your hand first, so come first forward up here. When you come forward, identify yourself and spell your last name for the clerk. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Robert Morales. It's spelled M.I.R.A.L.L.E.S. And I'm the one beach vendor in the room. And first and foremost, I want to say that I know you guys have some incredibly difficult decisions to make and I do not envy your position whatsoever. And I appreciate the time and effort that it takes, you know, to, to handle this certain crisis. Moving forward, you know, I know opening the beach, we have to be as careful as possible with social distancing. I don't like to bring my personal matters in, but this situation affects me greatly. But that being said, also as we move forward, opening the beach is one thing that I would like to say is how vendors can help is, you know, typically where we're located, especially in the private sections, are some of our most congested beaches in the area. And we have a direct hand in placing people in the, on the beach as far as effectively enacting that social distancing and make, maybe take a little more off the sheriff's hands because it's, you know, they're our most valuable assets and we want to keep them up and running and, you know, with larger issues, so to speak, but also help mitigate where we can. So that's one thing I would like to make known. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, can I speak to?
Yes, sir.
I've had several vendors contact me and I've had several of the resorts contact me. And as Mr. Morales said, that with them on the beach, they can make sure that they're social distancing.
Correct.
With them not on the beach, they can't make sure. The sheriff is going to have to increase his patrols up and down the 26 miles to guarantee the social distancing. So, I mean, and that's just something we have to think of. I've had several of resorts saying that without the vending, they can't guarantee social distancing to Sheriff's Department. They're going to encourage social distancing, but with the vending, they will have somebody down there all day long.
Correct.
And so that's just, you know, that's just, and I don't know the answer. I'll be honest with you, Robert, you know, every one of us or nobody alive has ever had to do this.
No.
And it's, it's very difficult for all of us to, I don't know about the rest of them, but I wake up every morning at three o'clock and I'm not a guy that wakes up at three o'clock like the chairman is, so. I, I've struggled with this. I've struggled with every decision we've had to make. It's, uh, you know, it might be that we do it a week and see that it's, you know, probably would be better with vending. But, uh, you know, it's, it's just, we're just damned if you do and damned if you don't.
I understand that, sir.
And all of us, I can tell you, if you ask every one of them, they'll tell you they're not sleeping at night. So bear with us.
Yes, sir.
Let's see what we can do. It's, as Mr. Tusa said, and I've said to vendors, this is going to be a strange summer. And with social distancing, you guys are not going to be able to put out as many chairs as you normally do.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, just, I ask that you're, you know, you all have patience, not only y'all, but the public, because we don't have a blueprint to do this.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're, we haven't had any direct information from the governor's office on this, what they're going to do. We've had hints and rumors and, and things like that, but, and I know the governor is, you know, he's just like us. He's, he's, he's losing sleep every day over this. But, uh, you know, it's going to be different for a little while and, uh, I'm not sure all summer we'll be back to normal. I hope we are. I'm, I'm tired of staying in. I'm tired of not having a good place to go eat lunch or something like that, but, uh, you know, we, we've got to be really, really careful and, and as Commissioner Chapman and Mr. Jones have said, as I'm looking at Holly, she's done a fabulous job and we appreciate Holly, we appreciate the work her staff does, but we're basing our decisions on the information we have, whether it's right or wrong. We have to go by the information we have. So I'm asking for everybody to have patience and let's slowly work our way into this and get as near to a normal summer as we possibly can, as soon as we can.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, I didn't get a chance to ask Louis, Jay came up. Louis, may I ask you a question? On the PIO side for Bay and the other counties, Okaloosa, do you have any, did you get any information from them regarding the times? Let's, let's finish it up with Robert first. I'm sorry.
All right, Robert, you heard what he had to say?
Yes, sir.
And I want everybody to know, we want to try and get as many people back to work as we possibly can, as soon as we can.
Yes, sir.
And that's why I've kind of directed the board, we talked about, we're doing it in two-week increments, you know, May 12th, we're going to look at all of this again. Is there something else we can do? Maybe we do a partial vending operation or something. Don't take that to the bank yet.
No, sir.
That's just based upon how we try to just slowly open up and give a little bit more if our levels maintain or continue to go down.
Yes, sir. I completely understand. And I know a lot of this is pretending, you know, on the short-term rentals and all I was saying is, you know, we're happy to help how we can.
And appreciate that very much.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, I've met with Robert several times over the years and, and he is one of the really good vendors.
Okay.
We never have problems with Robert, so.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would say to pass on to your, there's a lot more vehicles on the beach and I understand you wanting to help, but the sheriff has enforcement power.
Yes, sir.
And, and we need those vehicles on the beach and I don't want to put them in a position where they're having to do skiing around chairs.
Yes, sir.
So give us a couple of weeks, let's see how this works. And then if it works out to our, you know, if, if things are going good, then as Commissioner, I mean, as the chairman said, we will, we'll open things up more. But I think it would be a error to go down there and just open everything up completely.
Yes, sir.
And then have a disaster and, and you being June not being able to set up. So let's, just give us, give us a couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. Louis, come on up here and answer her question, please.
Uh, the PIOs of the Bay and Okaloosa, have you, have you been in contact with them? How that Bay opened this weekend and Okaloosa is due to open on the first with limited hours? And I've gotten so many emails regarding the limited hours and the, how I see it as congesting people to certain times. Do, do you have any comments to that?
Uh, yeah, this is kind of one of the beauties of having the EOC open is that we talk with, with everybody. I did get a call yesterday from Bay County's PIO and had very good conversation with her. Her question was actually they, their chair asked her to call me to kind of find out, you know, they knew what we were doing, they wanted to find out specifically what the board had done on Thursday because they weren't clear because of all the different stuff going around social media. So I explained what you guys were looking at today based on the, the request for the resolution. She said they're moving in that direction. I think that was, was mentioned earlier, but she said, yeah, it was, it was rough having those times that not only was it that the beach was congested, but the traffic in those areas was extremely high. But yeah, I've, I've spoken with them. I haven't spoken specifically with Okaloosa County, but we've had emails back and forth and, and I know that they're looking at, kind of like we were, what's the expansion going to look like over the next several weeks? So that's one of the things they're looking at is potentially, you know, opening theirs as well.
Their beach is open for more hours is what?
Yeah, they're looking at going without limits as well, based on the news I've seen as well as my discussions with them yesterday.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Bob, I think you wanted to speak. And while Bob is coming up here, for those of you that are on Zoom, if you wish to speak and need you to, uh, put your hand up, star nine, and that way I know that you're in the queue to be called upon. Okay, Bob?
Bob Brook, B-R-O-O-K-E. While I don't agree with all of the wherethes in the county attorney's proposed ordinance, I applaud her for her efforts and I think she's done a good job in general in the opening up the beaches in what I consider, and I think is what the, the Board of County Commissioners intended, is sort of a phased introduction of reoccupation of the beaches by the beachgoers. And I think your two-week intervals for looking at how each one or each phase works is a good idea as well. The one thing I would suggest as far as the, the chairman's two changes to the activities that are outlined in the executive order 20-91, if you're going to add paddle boarding, you might look at something more like water activities because then you want to, you got the canoeers and the surfers and the others. And if you're going to allow one, I'm not sure why you want to exclude the others. So you might try to come up with a more generalized term in that particular.
Instead of having like paddle boards, we have just water activities.
Which includes?
You know, and I agree because, you know, water surfing.
Boating, which is going to cover a lot too.
Yeah, well, I mean, people...
Well, I'm thinking of things like surfboarding, excuse me.
Surfing was one of them.
Rather than, rather than specifying, just generalize, generalize it into, into water, water activities.
I, I do want to be 100% clear that I make no decisions about opening or closing the beaches.
No, I understand that. I, I really, frankly, if it were up to me, I'd leave it just the way you wrote it for section four with the, with just the activities that the, that the governor described as essential activities. But, but I have no problem with, I think it's great to be able to go out there and sunbathe, although that probably would attract groups of people. And I don't know whether you'll allow them to have umbrellas or not have umbrellas. And there's lots of more. The, the original list for the governor is pretty simple to, to interpret and enforce. And I think the sheriff, after I heard his comments, will do an excellent job on being reasonable in how he enforces it.
I, I understand what you're saying and I understand what was originally proffered and all that, but how many people know what executive order 2091 is? They don't. And that's why I wanted to try and just put a list out there that's in line with that that everybody can understand.
I agree with that, Mr. Chairman. I just say, if, if it were me, I would just include the list of the activities that was in the original governor's order, not add anything additional to it.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I see three hands up in the queue to speak. I don't have any names, so I'll have to use the last four digits of the phone number, four, 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 five. You, go ahead and speak. I need you to identify yourself, please.
My name is Lyndon Thomas, T-H-O-M-A-S.
Okay.
Uh, I guess I was confused, will, will people be able to bring their own beach chair and umbrella to the beach?
Yeah. Yeah, as far as if, if, there's no, there's no vending.
I just would...
So if you want to tote it down there, I guess so, just maintain your six-foot disting.
Okay. That's what I was trying to clarify. Okay, well, well, thank you so much. I appreciate all y'all's efforts.
All right, thank you. Next is four, one, four, seven, four, one, four, seven. Please identify yourself.
This is Ann Stone, S-T-O-N-E. And my question is similar. Are we allowed to bring a tent and beach chairs to sit on the beach? We'll be at a private beach at Camp Golf and before we come down, I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to do that.
Do we need to ban tents for now?
Well, so currently, I'm trying to think what our current regulations are on tents because they... No, I know, but we, I think we have different regulations on private property and public property. And then the private property owners that run out their beaches might have different regulations on top of what we have. I mean, it'd be like an umbrella or anything else.
A tent is, is going to encourage people gathering in groups. I mean, that's the purpose.
But, but should...
There's still going to be a limited...
Could you repeat what she said? I couldn't hear it, um, from the audio.
Okay. Hang on a minute, everybody. Sid, explain that again, please.
Okay, so currently as the resolution is written, there would be no prohibition on tents. I mean, that'd be up to you guys if, if we wanted, if you felt that it was necessary to limit crowds and stop the spread of the disease, we can try to include that. I would remind you guys that that's been a, an enforcement issue for several, for many years. So I mean, but take that into account for what it is. Currently though, if I'm remembering correctly, tents are allowed on private property, but again, camping on the Gulf is open to, you know, open to many, many visitors and they may have different regulations on top of what we have. I'm not sure.
Ms. Stone, if I understood, Ms. Stone, if I understood what she was saying, it just depends on where you're at on these private beaches. There may be some requirements there from the HOA or whatever that says you can't do it, so, uh, as far as...
So I would be able to take a tent to Camp Golf in my own chairs?
And on my Camp Golf.
I would assume so at this point in time.
Okay, okay. It's just, uh, it's, it really helps us as visitors coming in, we want to respect these, you're making very difficult decisions and we, we want to, we have to make decisions if we're going to come down as well.
Understood, understood. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we've been sitting here about an hour and a half. We need to take a short break, so we're going to take about a 15-minute break. We'll be back at 10:45 Central Time. So everybody just hang on. All right, we'll come back to order. We're in the public comment section. Next up is the last four-digit, zero, eight, eight, nine, zero, eight, eight, nine. Please identify yourself. Zero, eight, eight, nine, last four digits. Are you there? Moving on to the next one.[1788.83] Is this zero eight eight nine? Hello?
Hello?
Yes, sir. Are you, what's the last four digits, your phone number?
Zero eight eight nine.
Okay, identify yourself, please. We didn't.
Hello, is it which, is it which you'd be telling? Can you hear me?
Yeah, well, I can hear you. Just spell your last name for us, please.
Uh, B as in Bobo, U as in Uniform, T as in Tango, E as in Echo, Lima Alpha. I'm a resident of Seagull Beach.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I really, I appreciate all your efforts. You've really thought this through very well. It's very impressive. Uh, and relative to other areas, thanks to your good work, uh, we're very fortunate. What's alarming to me is that we open the beaches, it will not just be, uh, for us. But, uh, while the county is a tourist destination, opening the beaches will encourage influx of second homeowners in short term. Renters from many states with a higher incidence. The University of Washington's model, which is used by, uh, President Trump and the White House, says, uh, at home and social distancing measures should continue into June for Florida and Georgia. This model indicates, also indicates that other primary feeder states should continue intense might, uh, mitigation efforts at least until mid-May. Neither Florida or any of its feeder states have met the White House leading criteria needed even to begin reopening. I don't know why we're not, uh, following, uh, President Trump's recommendations. Uh, testing is very adequate, uh, as, as our, our, uh, very helpful health department says. And we have to be very, uh, careful what we do. It's going to be difficult to monitor any spread of the disease. Now you're being very careful and, uh, uh, and reevaluating this, uh, short, uh, time, but the incubation for this virus is two weeks. So, and it could take almost three weeks for us to even see the impact of inviting all these visitors in. And somebody opening prematurely, definitely, all the great work you guys have done. Uh, I would prefer we should pull off everything to June. I would, I would hate to have a, a deadly wave, uh, resurgence coming. We have to close down for the summer. That would be disastrous for all the businesses and the, and the workers. So my, in conclusion, the very least, we should take all these wonderful ideas you guys have come and just wait and see what the governor says. If, if he opens up the state, the second homeowners, we should not open the beaches. Uh, I think we should all agree that a ban on short-term rentals, if that's lifted, we should not open the beaches. We'll be putting our, our, uh, first-line workers, uh, and our whole population at risk. Uh, thank you very much for all your work.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is, uh, Jim Bagby. Jim, you there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And, uh, thank the commissioners. You guys are doing a great job. I would just ask you to take a, a little slower approach to opening the beaches. I wouldn't do the sunbathing. And I agree with the no vendors. I would wait till the twelfth. Uh, you know, when the governor started talking about this, it was for exercising for mental health. So walking, running, jogging, swimming, you know, it was more of an exercise focus. I think if you allow the sunbathing, I think you're going to realize most everyone's worst nightmare, that people just come down in droves. And I know there are even people that believe that if we're open all day and we allow sunbathing, people will come over from Bay and Okaloosa County, uh, just to sunbathe. They probably won't come over just to walk the beach. They can walk the beach in those counties. I would also ask you to just, uh, impose the no tents, uh, as part of your order. Because that really is counterproductive to the social distancing that I think that we're trying to do. But you've done a great job and I agree with unlimited hours. Uh, I think that is the way, and I think that's why Bay County is probably going to go that way, probably the other counties too. But I would just ask you to maybe on the twelfth, allow sunbathing. And then prior to Memorial Day, allow the vendors. Once we've shown that we can gradually, uh, progress and that people can actually follow the rules that you're going to be putting in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, last four digits is one nine nine three, one nine nine three. Please identify yourself.
Yes, this is Kristen Merriam, M E R R I A M.
Merriam, go ahead.
I just would like a point of clarification from the beginning of the meeting. When the attorney spoke about opening the beaches for like periods of time and then readdressing every seven days. Are we still thinking that?
No, ma'am. What's on the table now is, uh, as of last Thursday was unlimited.
I, I think she's talking about us having to redo this every seven days.
Well, the emergency order must be remove, uh, redo every seven days by statute. So whatever we do today, seven days later, I will have to reinstitute it again for another seven days. That's just the way the statute runs.
Okay.
Well, yes, assuming they're still an emergency, and I think that's going to be considered an emergency for weeks and months to come.
Okay, I just worry about, I have a, a vacation home, um, down there and renters have paid to come in the summer. And if it's available, people are going to be less likely to be able to plan and book travel if we are going to go on a weekly basis as to whether or not our beaches are going to be open.
So.
Um, you can't really make plans that way.
Okay.
We're all trying to get back to a normalcy a little bit here. And the other thing is about the, the beach chairs. I mean, I can fish from the shore and still sit in a beach chair and sunbathe. I think that's a slippery slope. I think if we social distance and we're six feet apart, we should be able to enjoy sitting in a chair soaking up the sun just like I can in my backyard and be outdoors.
Okay. Alright, well, there's not much I can do about the seven day requirement. That's by statute. So if the emergency still exists at the end, conclusion of the seven days we're in, then it'll be, uh, reinstated for additional seven days. And that's just the way the statute allows us to keep the, uh, declaration of emergency in place.
And I do want to be clear that the board has the authority based on circumstances, changed circumstances, to make changes to these rules. That there's no way that we can guarantee what will happen in the future because this is a fluid, changing emergency situation. So just because these are the regulations now doesn't mean that's what they'll be later in the summer. They could be less or they could be greater.
Uh, that's right, Ms. Merriam. The, the things, what happens here on site will dictate what actions that we may have to take. Whether it's, uh, increasing restrictions or relaxing restrictions. So, uh, it's just.
Okay, if, that makes sense. So can I, is there still more time that I can add one more thing on that note?
If you can do it in about twenty seconds. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, it's regarding the vendors, um, I think they would be essential in helping regulate the social distancing and allowing them to set up people. Because if you think about Rosemary Beach in the summer, they have four rows of chairs, people body to body. If we don't have them down there separating the chairs, you're going to have everybody come down with beach towels, towels and congregating in huge droves if you don't allow the vendors to set up and give them guidelines on the distancing of the chairs and limiting the amount of people going to the high-traffic areas.
Okay, understood. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh. I've got the next one up. I think the last name is Stanfield. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Yes, sir.
Identify yourself and spell your last name.
Yes, sir. My name is Nathan Stanfield. Last name spelled S T A N F I E L D.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to do, get some clarification on, uh, umbrella and chairs. Are they going to be allowed? And then under the definition of a tent, is a ten by ten canopy considered a tent?
From what legal tells us, uh, the tents, uh, depending on where you're putting them up at, there may be on some private beaches restrictions there. But we're not prohibiting at this time tents or umbrellas or chairs. But there won't be any vendor umbrellas and chairs there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright. Next is a, uh, last name, I think it's Sanchez. Can, identify yourself, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Sammy Sanchez, Fire Marshal of South Walton Fire District. How's everybody doing today?
I'm doing fine. Sammy, go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you for having me on here. I just had a quick question and if I missed it early, I apologize. But, uh, um, with regards to vending, does that also include beach bonfires? We're, we're in the position, South Walton Fire District is, uh, to support whatever decision the board makes. And we just want to make sure we're on the same page. We're, obviously, we're getting bombarded with, uh, phone calls regarding beach bonfires. And we just want to make sure that whatever the board determines, that's, that's the guidelines we're going to follow as well.
Alright, well, I'll try to make it simple. They are banned. No bonfires.
That's good, sir.
Did that take care of it for you, Sammy?
Yes, sir. We just, uh, again, just, uh, appreciate, uh, what you folks are doing. Um, obviously, when the beaches are opened or if they're opened, our, our guards will play a vital role in, in that opening. And I just want to give a, a quick, uh, um, acknowledgement to, to our guard that have been out there recently and what a great job they've been doing. Obviously, when this opens, they, they'll be on the front line, so to speak. And, uh, uh, you have a good bunch of lifeguards out there. And just, just want to acknowledge that and appreciate you guys' support.
Alright, Sammy, while they've got you on the phone, uh, right now, the, the motion includes, uh, water activities. And I think right now the, the water's been closed, so that would be also opened up too. And so I don't know how that's going to play with your lifeguards. But, uh, if you can reach out and let us know or let Larry know what y'all's intent is there. But I don't think you can close the water now based upon what's on the board's, uh, motion.
Yes, sir. And, and speaking of our beach safety director, if the water is opened back up, I'm assuming that we're going to go back to, uh, the man in our towers that has been as normal. So, um, we'll, we'll certainly keep an eye on this and, and see what transpires. And, uh, if there's anything other that I mentioned, I'm sure our beach safety director will, will let us know.
Okay, Larry?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, um, while the, um, resolution opens the beaches, um, it will not preclude the South Walton Fire District from flying the double red flags when conditions would require it. So I think we should be clear that we would go back to the normal process of, of, uh, utilizing the flag system and whether the beaches are open, whether they're closed or, I mean, the water's open, closed, or whatever the case may be.
But I don't think there was any, uh, our intent to, uh, if the water's open back up, that they wouldn't start using the flag system as they normally do. And of course, they still have the option to close it based upon surf conditions, et cetera, out there. Jay, you want to say something?
Just real quick, I did have a conversation with David Vaughn, the beach safety director for South Walton Fire District. And they do plan on resuming their normal operations of flags and having the lifeguards on the beach. Why don't y'all open the beach?
Alright, thank you. Alright, Sammy, is that it, bud?
Yes, sir. I appreciate your, uh, throwing that up for us. Thank you.
Commissioner Chapman, and I'm sorry, just to be, and I'm glad that, um, Sammy called in because that was an oversight on my part about the bonfires. So it's a separate permit from vending and special events. So if we want to do, if we want to make it explicitly clear that bonfires are also prohibited, if, uh, Commissioner Gladwell wants to consider amending his motion to include that.
I'll amend the motion to include that.
Okay, it was probably about a second. Okay. Alright, thank you, Sammy. Next up is, uh, I think it's Lonergan, Lonergan Kim. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Spell your last name for the clerk, please.
Lonergan, L O N E R G A N.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
We own multiple properties off thirty A. We rent some of those properties. Nonetheless, I know y'all are making hard decisions and I one hundred percent the governor's decision to stop rent, short-term rentals and your decisions that you've made. And this is why my main home is right by a public access. I watch people going over the public access and they do not do social distancing. I also live very close to the bypass. Significant disregard for social distancing. So my concern is, on the list of opening the beaches, sunbathing, I do not see, and unfortunately, um, don't have faith, I wish I did, in individuals to not put a lot of chairs down there. And the sheriff will come by, I've seen, I saw him do this when we had the public-private issue. People were jumping the public, going over to private beaches and the sheriff would come by and they would, um, claim they lived someplace, or if they're on the public beach, they grabbed their chairs and they went and hid. And I just think with, if we include sunbathing on that list, we are going to increase the risk and our community cannot handle that. Not being very articulate, because I just realized how emotional I am about this, but I, I, I think sunbathing should be something discussed in two weeks and not put on that list right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, for the board, I will withdraw that part of it, the sunbathing, if, uh, you make it part of your motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Well, sunbathing is off right now, as far as the motion. Do I? You can sit on the beach, just can't lay a blanket out. I don't know. Sunbathing, sunbathing. I mean, anyway, the next one up, two eight one eight, two eight one eight. Identify yourself.
That's me. My name, my name's Ann Walton, A N N E W A L T O N.
Okay, Ms. Walton. Go ahead.
Um, first, I just want to say, you know, this is extremely unprecedented. So I really appreciate the time and the effort that you guys are taking to make sure that we're all safe and that, you know, everything's going well. Um, we own a private condo down there with a private beach. And I think that sun tanning is okay as long as, you know, we have the clear restrictions in place and we give people the opportunity to show that they are respectful and can respect the rules that we have for their safety. Um, but my question really comes down to pool decks. So if we are allowing sunbathing and sun tanning on the beach, are we also allowing that with private pool decks and stuff like that? Or is that more up to the condos?
Be up to your local condo and HOA or whatever.
Okay, so that would just be something that they would come to the decision about. That wouldn't be something that needed to be put into any type of legislation or anything like that?
Not unless it has something to do with the beach itself. If it doesn't, we don't have any control or want to have any control over that.
Okay, great. That was my only question. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Rick Merriam. Are you there, Rick? Rick Merriam, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
You're breaking up bad, Rick. Try it again. Cannot hear you. Got a bad connection or something. Uh, we'll go to the next one, Kay Brief. Kay Brief.
Yes, can you hear me?
Go ahead, got you.
Uh, great.
Spell your last name. Spell your last name for the clerk, please.
It's Brie, B as in Boy, R I E S as in Frank, and I live in Seagull Beach.
Okay.
So, and I want to thank you so much for working so hard to keep us healthy. And because of your decisions to close the beaches and the governor's ban on short-term rentals, we've been relatively safe. We've had more cases per hundred thousand people than some Florida counties, but not as many as most. So thank you. And I know that you struggle with balancing many interests, um, including owners who have rental properties, many from out of town, small business owners and our residents. Right now, Walton does not meet the guidelines from the White House for reopening. Um, no new cases for fourteen days. I think since last Thursday's emergency meeting, there's been another COVID nineteen case. And the state of Florida does not need it either. A week ago, on April twenty-one, Florida had a hundred and thirty-five cases per hundred thousand. On April twenty-eight, it has a hundred and fifty-six per hundred thousand. So I'm here to urge you to keep the beaches closed. Money cannot replace lives. We're opening our beaches. We'll draw visitors, including, uh, A S. replace lives. We're opening our beaches. We'll draw visitors, including asymptomatic carriers by the thousands from nearby hotspots, like Louisiana, Georgia, and Mississippi, and from places like New York, and New Jersey, and Illinois. I think the caller from Pittsburgh is an excellent example of our problem. Her metro area has 2,400 cases, but the number doubles every three weeks, and the case numbers are trending upward. She and her family may be asymptomatic carriers. And the commissioners raised a good point about the impact of visitors on our food supply. I hadn't thought about that. Shelves are empty now. I have family elsewhere who cannot get essential supplies. Visitor influx will make that much worse. I worry about the virus strikes every age, and I'm even worried about our lifeguards out there, who are approached by people who are not social distancing. They walk right up within arm's length, and we're endangering our medical personnel, our cashiers, our first responders. If you must open the beaches, I hope you'll find a way to have the same hours as our neighboring counties, where beaches open only in the morning and the afternoon. For my beach day or weekend, I would choose the spot where I could be all day. So let's limit it to locals and coordinate with our neighbors. And I'm hoping that if they must open, the sheriff can enforce social distancing, even writing tickets, being stronger than giving polite warnings. I'm glad that you're banning sunbathing.
Ms. Brief, your time is up.
Okay. Well, one other thing, I hope you'll consider adopting a COVID-19 tax on short-term rentals to cover addition.
All right. Next is, I can't think of, see, I see Rebecca in there, Rebecca Keen. Is that who it is? Hello? Rebecca Keen?
Kagan.
Maybe it's Rebecca Kagan. Anyone there, anybody close to that name? Move on. Next one would be a four-digit number, 8013, 8013. Identify yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Brian AMSH, last name's A-M-S-H-O-F-F. I just wanted to call in again to express my concerns. I called you guys at the last meeting as well. One thing that's really boggling my mind is how we're even considering the opinions of these people that are not from here. You know, if I was traveling to New York City, I'm not going to call up into their county meetings and stuff. So I think it's just ridiculous that we're even listening to people give their opinions on that stuff. This should be something that's handled here at the county with our leaders like you guys and our residents, like people like me. I also support what the last caller just said about keeping the beaches closed, or opening them just in a much more limited fashion. I think it's silly that all these people want to give the tourists and stuff all this credit that they're actually going to social distance, because they're not. It's not going to happen. We're going to be the next place that has pictures of, oh, look at this beach. Oh, wow, look, these people are not social distancing. And that's kind of the way it is down here when the beaches are open. It's just people jammed into these small, tiny spots, because there's not a lot of public, excuse me, there's not a lot of public beach. So they're crammed into those tiny spots. It's just going to be the recipe for disaster. Cases are going to go up, and we're going to, I think, if we do it the way that we're talking about doing it, it's going to end badly. And, you know, hopefully, we're not in the same position in a couple weeks where we're talking about the next month, and the next month, and the next month. So I know it's difficult, and thank you, guys, for all that you do, and thanks for listening to me. I just wanted to give my two cents as a resident here.
Okay. Well, I want you and others to also know that we listen to our locals, too. We've got a lot of people that depend on that beach and the industry down there to make a living, and they are hurting, and they need some relief. And that's why we're trying to take a measured approach to this about the actions that we take. And there's people out there that say, if you don't feel comfortable going to Walmart, Publix, or the beach, don't go. Stay at the house. I mean, good gracious, there's got to be some personal responsibility on the part of the public out there. All right, next up, last four digits is 1041, 1041. Please identify yourself. 14.
I think y'all are doing one great job. I just wish the sheriff had been there today.
Identify.
Because on Sunday night.
Hello, hello. Identify yourself, please.
I did. Suzanne Harris.
Okay, Suzanne, thank you.
Y'all are doing a great job. I wish the sheriff were there, but I have an off-duty sheriff at my building every single night, beginning at 6:00. On Sunday night, he ran 30 people off the beach. We're closed, and we're staying closed until May 15, no matter what. He had to run 30 people off the beach between Shipwatch, Edgewater, and Grand Dune. Since I don't have anybody in my building, they weren't our guests. Then he went down to Camping on the Gup. There were over 100 people on the beach and in the water at Camping on the Gup. His name is Don Fernandez, in case you want to call him and ask him. We had to call Cozen to report it. They were also having bonfires. And every time he would try to leave down there to come back to Edgewater, they would, soon as he turned around, they would all run back down into the water. Now, my concern is, Edgewater alone has 175 condos. And if you only put four per condo, which most of them hold six or eight, you have over 1,000 people on my beach. Grand Dune has 175 condos, and they're all three and four bedrooms. They only have 98 feet of beach. Edgewater has 360. But when we start trying to put 1,000 people on our beach with nobody there to watch, I'm very concerned about the social distancing. And I know that the sheriff has told them to be nice to people, and because Don Fernandez works the beach for the sheriff every day, all day. I know they're being told to be nice to people, and try to explain the social distancing. But I'm on my beach, and I'm watching it every day. You can't get the people, the people at Shipwatch next door to us, they're on their beach all day, every day. And when they ask them nicely to leave, they walk off until he drives eight feet down, and they're right back on the beach. And I also feel sorry for them. And Bill, you know, some of them have been spit on when they stopped to talk to people on the beach. They've been touched at. But the people aren't leaving the beach. And I don't know how Camping on the Gup can have 100 people out there every day, swimming and building sandcastles and doing bonfires when the beach is totally closed. But I don't, Mike hasn't got the two people, two sheriffs on the beach. Fernandez covers 18 miles of the 26 miles of beach by himself. People know when he goes by. The lifeguards go by, the fire trucks. The other night, one of the fire departments, Sammy's out there, their people are doing one hell of a job. But they can't keep people off the beach now, and the rule is, the beach is closed. I just want y'all to get a plan. When 360 people are on 90 feet of beach.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, 0181, 0181.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Can hear you. Just identify yourself and spell your last name for the clerk.
Yes, good morning. This is Alice Butella, B is in Boy, U-T-E-L-A, and I live in Seagrove Beach. And I, too, don't feel that this is a good time to open the beach. But since it looks like you're taking this risky action, I appreciate the information sought from our healthcare professional, Ms. Molly, by Ms. Nipper, regarding the recommendation of everyone wearing a mask. And I feel that this requirement is necessary to protect one another if we're going to go to the beach. As she stated, if people do not social distance, then both people need to have a mask. Now, our beaches are narrow, and a lot of people will be walking and jogging, and this often makes it very hard to social distance. It's even hard to social distance walking the street. So we know that the spread is greater than six feet with exertion. So if you've got somebody walking at you, and they're jogging, they're putting out a lot more spread than six feet. So I know it would be difficult to enforce everyone wearing a mask, but would it hurt to make this recommendation that people wear a mask? Because not everybody's courteous. People walk up to you as they were saying, and they're closer than six feet. So I just think that would be, in some way, it would be prudent to use what information we have from our professionals to make this success example or a recommendation, at least, you know, when you get to the beach, see this, and wear your mask. So thank you very much for your time and effort.
Okay, thank you. Lisa Boushy. Lisa, you there?
Yes. Hello, Commissioner. Can you hear me okay?
We got you. Go ahead.
Okay. Boushy is B-O-U-S-H-Y. I want to thank you for providing this remote means for all of us to participate. And I wanted to mention a couple of things. I really respect the fact that you're trying to do some staggered opening with some restrictions and all. I think that's a great move to make. Regarding sunbathing, I'm glad you removed that. However, the real issue even with sunbathing, in my mind, is umbrellas and tents, is sun shelters. Because if somebody is merely sunbathing, the whole idea is they want to be in the sun. So by having sun shelters, you're sort of, you know, contradicting the whole idea of sunbathing. But if you're doing away with that entirely, does that mean that you intend that people do not have umbrellas and tents and so forth, for instance, if they are fishing?
Okay. That it, Lisa? Hello, Lisa?
Yes.
Anything else?
Well, just, did you hear my question? Do you intend that if someone is fishing, for instance, which is a stationary activity, will they be allowed to use umbrellas and tents? Or is the idea that if there's no sunbathing, there are no sun shelters at all?
I'm looking over at legal.
They're fishing.
They're fishing. Yeah.
They're not sunbathing, are they?
They're fishing. And she's, I think, Lisa, your question was whether or not they can have a tent they set under while they're fishing. Is that correct?
Or an umbrella. In other words, can they have any kind of sun shelter, or is the idea to keep sun shelters off the beach during at least this phase of opening the beach?
You got any comment?
I don't have a comment. Call the question, Mr. Chairman. Call the question.
Okay. All right, Lisa, I don't know if you didn't get your answer, but the question's been called, so there'd be no additional public comment, and we will take a vote. All right. All right, we're going to pause just a minute till the other commissioner gets back. Sid Wald, I'm waiting on her to get back. Have you got, all wrote down what has been talked about as far as the motion, and also any deletions from the original motion?
Yes. So just if you'd like me to clarify, I can. All right, so the motion.
She's back. So go ahead and clarify.
So the motion is to adopt the resolution with the following modifications. So we would add a paragraph under paragraph four that says, "All permits for fires on the beach shall be suspended, and no fire permit shall be issued while this local state of emergency remains in effect." Paragraph C will be modified to read as follows. "Individuals on the beach shall limit their activities to the following: walking, jogging, fishing, swimming, paddle boarding, surfing, and boating." Sunbathing was deleted.
All right.
It's pretty vague as it is, you know, and as vague as we keep it.
I mean, it's going to be impossible to list.
Yeah, I think we need to keep it as vague as we can.
So your ask is to add all water?
Motion to, just instead of specific things, water activities.
All water activities.
Hate to bring this up, but I think, didn't we call the question?
Well, that's true. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, too.
No, that's my fault.
Okay. All right. So as it was previously motioned and also a modification prior to the call for the question, those items that you just went through is what is being put into the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions from the board? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries 5-0. All right, that takes care of that. So we'll get.
Some additional matters that we need to cover.
I know. I'm trying to get back to my agenda.
Well, one issue with the board, now that you voted to move forward with the beach opening on May 1, I've had inquiries from some particularly resorts that have asked for permission to get on the beach Thursday afternoon prior to Friday to clean it up, prepare it, because they have been precluded from being on the beach since whenever. And I thought it was the wisest thing to do to let them do that, to keep them from trying to do it Friday morning when there were folks at the beach. We will certainly have our, some adjacent folks out on the beach as well, doing some preparation work. And if this, unless there's some objection from the board, you know, just want to let our code folks know, and maybe let Bobby, let the sheriff's office know, when those folks there, that if folks are legitimately working Thursday, Thursday afternoon to prepare for beach opening, à la cleaning, raking, sweeping, and those type of things, that that's not going to be an issue.
I don't see an issue with it. I don't think the board has any issue with it. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Going back to the original agenda, I see nothing under Public Works Finance.
We still have stuff under the coronavirus of COVID-19 that we have to address. Right, Larry?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, jump in it. I didn't know anything about that part of it, but go ahead.
I want to confer with Sid one moment.
Mr. Chairman, while they're talking, can I just make one comment?
Go ahead.
I wanted to thank Jeff Goldberg and his team in the EOC. Thank you for everything you do, and I really appreciate all the work you've done through this pandemic.
Were we going to address the sheriff's request to have some sort of contingency target? If so, I would proffer one.
Well, listen, let them finish with COVID-19, and then we'll get into that, because that was on my agenda also. Go ahead.
Let's discuss parks for a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing on the beach. So I do need, sorry, I do need a motion from the board, just making it explicitly clear that Commissioner Chapman has the authority to extend this local state of emergency that we just adopted on May 5, assuming nothing has changed at that time. And if something changes, substance. And if something changes substantively, we'll call an emergency meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And I won't let the board know, be available in case something comes up, even if it have to call a meeting for a Sunday afternoon or something. Try not to, but.
Wrong board.
Yeah.
May I get clarification, is this a resolution or ordinance? It's been referred to both.
It's a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Jones.
Parks, um, you know, um basically all the parks throughout the county are closed except for the boat ramps. Is this something you want to be consistent with the beach opening and to reopen the parks? Or you want to wait and see what happens on the beach first?
I would prefer we wait till the 12th.
I, I disagree, Mr. Chairman. I think if with an influx of people, we uh, we need to have as many places open as, that they can go to as possible. So uh I would make a motion that we open the parks and the golf course uh May 1st. There's a lot of people before we close Grady Brown that found out they like going there better than the beach. So maybe that would relieve our crowding on the beach. And uh I think that, that we need to go ahead and open every park that we have.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Got a second?
Second, good deal.
We got a couple of seconds.
Are you ready for Friday?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any public comment?
Bob Broke, B R O O K E. Does the motion include the same kind of restrictions that uh the distancing and things like that?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Absolutely. I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't include that, but that will be part of my motion to include social distancing and all those. Thank you, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so to clarify, do you, do you want that to be part of our local state of emergency? So it would be punishable by, as a second degree misdemeanor if, if people didn't follow the social distancing guidelines or, because otherwise there would be no enforcement mechanism?
Well, that, that's the thing about it. Why do it if we're not gonna have an enforcement arm in there?
I think we, I think it needs to be part of our emergency.
Yes, I agree with that.
Our emergency.
All right, the board's in agreement, I guess, on that. Uh, we got a motion and a second, any other public comment? I don't know with all these hands that are up if there's, want to comment about this particular motion. That's all the comments I want to take is what is in regard to this motion that's on the floor concerning the parks and the golf course. If you're not. Well, the hands didn't go down, so we'll see. Jim and Barbara. Jim and Barbara. You there? Jim and Barbara. Next is last four digits, nine. Who, who's this? Nine two nine two, nine two nine two.
Hey, this is Philip John, J O H N S.
All right, and your comments in regard to the motion that's on the floor?
Uh, uh, could I just ask for clarification on the previously voted motion?
Uh, that's totally out of order as far as what we got on the, on the floor right now. You can uh.
Okay, I'll just shoot, I'll just shoot y'all an email then.
There you go. All right. Call, call in user one, whoever that is. Call in user one.
They're out.
They left. Rick Miriam, Rick Miriam, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you, spell your last name for the clerk.
M D R R I A M. And I'm, I've been on hold because you guys couldn't get me the last time. So am I going out of order now? Because you said you were gonna come back to me and, and you didn't.
Well, we, the, the call for the question by a board member stopped all additional public comments and we voted on that particular motion. So no sir, uh, you're, you would be out of order. Yes, sir.
Well, I think that's unfair. When you said you were gonna get back to me, I walked outside.
I didn't, I didn't say anything, Mr. Miriam. I didn't say any, I called for whoever, I called your name several times, you didn't respond, we moved on.
I'll get back with you.
I didn't say that.
If you got a person there, maybe they can read it, but doesn't matter.
We're done, thank you. Niva, you're next, Niva. Niva, are you there? I don't hear her either. All right, next one is four.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Niva is here.
Well, you got to talk to me, Niva.
Yes, sir, I, I, I'm a senior citizen and this Zoom is new to me, but I'll do the best I can.
All right, Niva, Niva is your, Niva, is your comments concerning the present motion on the floor concerning the opening of the parks and the golf course? That's what we're taking comments on and only that.
Our questions regarding the parks.
Yes, ma'am.
Which parks are we speaking of?
We're talking about all county parks that we presently have closed. That is.
All right, but does that include the beachfront, public beach parks?
The beaches have been open and the parks are not regional accesses to be open to.
Yes, but not, we don't control what the state parks are gonna do.
Not the state parks now.
Up, up to the state.
I have a question regarding to a regional beach park.
Which one?
Uh, inlet beach.
What's your question?
My question is, uh, are we going to be allowed to have, uh, if you could take your personal chair onto the beach and sit in your personal chair using the uh guidelines for social distancing?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
I can take my own chair down there and, and was this already voted on? I know that there was one lady that was talking about sunbathing and she was against the sunbathing.
Sunbathing, the sunbathing, Ms. Niva, is off the table. It is not part of the uh approved activities down there.
Okay, but you can take your own personal folding chair and sit by the water and, and look at the water.
Yes, ma'am, you can.
All right, that was my question for clarification. Thank you very much. I am a homeowner in Walton County, but I'm not on the beach.
Okay.
And I haven't been to, to get down there for, you know, all of this time. And I do appreciate you all uh working as hard as you can uh to satisfy all the people. I know it's a tremendous job and I do appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, last four digits, four four, four five, four four, four five. And identify yourself.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mark, Morgan, M O R G A N.
All right, Mark, is your comments concerning the present motion on the floor dealing with the opening of parks?
And my comments were, were just like, I'm sorry, but I didn't want to hang up on you, but was from the previous caller, she, that answered my question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, next, uh, three seven nine three, three seven nine three.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. This is Dr. Carol Zonia, Z O N I A. I just have a point of information uh about opening the parks for your consideration. I know that COVID-19 does survive up to three days on plastic and stainless steel. Uh, just for some information as far as how sanitizing uh the facilities at these parks would be, appreciate how much you're agonizing over these decisions to keep us all safe. So thank you very much, that's my only comment.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Janice, Janice, are you there? Janice, are you there? I don't hear. All right, move on. Uh, next one is last four digits, eight two one nine, eight two one nine. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Uh, thank you for taking my call. Um, my name's Cara Owen, C A R A O W E N, uh, property owner.
All right, this is in, your comments is gonna be in reference to the present motion on the floor dealing with parks?
The parks, yes. Um, just a little clarification regarding like, for example, the caller that called about the inlet beach park. Um, as a mother, am I allowed to take a chair and maybe be stationary? It's not really sunbathing, but I'm watching my kids play and following the social distancing guidelines?
Yes.
Out of state park as well as the actual beaches or is that, are there different sets of rules?
As far as what we have control law over, you can take the chair down there to sit in to watch your kids. I can't speak to the state. Um, that's their, they'll have to make their own decision what they're gonna do there.
Okay, so the, the other guidelines before you move on to state parks, um, as a mother, am I allowed to sit on a towel or a chair and watch my children play? Stationary?
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I just wanted, since you took sunbathing out, I just want to make sure that wasn't considered sunbathing.
Not if you're sitting on it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Brian Sargent, Brian Sargent, are you there?
Yes, sir. Thank you Commissioners for your time and I appreciate you uh.
Spell your last name for the clerk, please.
Oh, yes, sir. It's Brian Sargent, S A R G E N T. Uh, once again, thank you for um allowing us uh property owners the way to speak when we're out of state, so I really appreciate that. Thank you for opening the beaches. We're uh super excited to make our way down to Florida. I jumped out of the meeting after the initial vote, so forgive me if this question has been answered. I know that you said there would be no sunbathing allowed on a towel.
Miss Sargent, Miss Sargent, that, that issue has already been voted on and settled. What the motion that you can speak to has to deal with the actions we're gonna take concerning our county parks, county parks, not the beach, the county parks and other amenities that we have here under county control. That's what's on the table now.
Okay, can I, do you mind if I just ask? I just had a question. Uh, my question was, are you allowed to sit on the beach in a chair with an umbrella? I missed that whole part.
Thank you very much. Except, what about umbrellas? Nobody said anything about them things.
Do you want to take a break and, or, we can talk, so the way it is written, the things that are listed are the things that are allowed. So I mean, anything that's not listed is not allowed technically.
All right.
Obviously, we're not the agency either that will be enforcing a lot of this, it'll be the sheriff. So some of this is, people are gonna have to be reasonable in how they're going about this.
I understand that, but didn't you also say that umbrellas was one of those things that fells under the beach activities ordinance? I think you did. All right, so tents, umbrellas are out. Is that what you're saying? Is that part of that motion? If it's not listed, then it's prohibited. Is that what you're saying?
Generally, that is how, how rules are interpreted. Do we want to take a quick break?
Let's take a recess.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, could we do, go ahead and do, well, there's just another, I was gonna say, let's finish up this with Ryan King and Jeff Floyd and then come back to this other one?
Let's get the vote on the parks and then come back.
Would that be, would that be okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I guess so, we will. All right, we got two more people in the queue. First off, I, now we're down to one. Ryan King, you'd be the last to speak on this particular motion dealing with the county parks. Mr. King, can you hear me? Mr. King?
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, I appreciate. So can you hear me okay?
Mr. King, yes, sir. As long as your comments deal with the motion on the floor dealing with county parks and other county amenities that we have presently closed, that's what.
Yes, sir, they are, they are, your main, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, I appreciate, I appreciate Commissioners, Commissioner Anderson's comments about uh, and his motion about parks and uh just want, want to let you know that we, we definitely support those in my household. I'm here in Miramar Beach.
Okay. I appreciate that, Mr. King. Is that it? Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Got one more, Jeff, whoever Jeff is. Jeff, identify yourself. Jeff, are you there?
Yes, hi, are you there?
Okay, identify yourself, please. Spell your last name for the clerk.
Yeah, Jeff Samluk, S A M L U K. Uh, as far as like the, does this also include the parking by Pump and a Joe's? Is that part of the, the disaccess as well?
No, sir, it's not. This is only county parks.
Okay, so I didn't know if that was considered, I saw the signs out there, wasn't sure if that was a county park or a county, part of the county um area. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, now, we got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now, let's take a recess, get that squared away one way or the other. Thank you, we're in recess.
So we've had a lot of questions about chairs, tents, umbrellas. So under the action taken by the board and the direction that we've gotten today, just try to answer all those questions, chairs, tents, umbrellas will be allowed under the parameters that currently govern those, so under the beach activities ordinance. So if the tents would be allowed, typically they'd be allowed. If chairs and umbrellas would be allowed, typically except for vending, they'll be allowed now, unless the board wants to do something different. But that's how it stands right now.
All right. Does the board have any questions about that? Any modifications to that? Seeing none, and I think that is a settled point. Okay. Mr. Jones, I think you had something else you want to talk about?
Uh, yes, sir. The landfill, we are prepared to move forward with the re-opening it. We'll do that in the next three weeks, just want to make the board aware of it. It may take us a couple of days to get all the moving parts put together, but maybe that work's on, so we can go back to the city and yard waste and the fence that uh is typically brought to us from um county residents. So, Billy, we'll be ready to move on that in the next two, three days?
What day can you be ready to do that? I mean, somebody's gonna, well, what's, what does that mean? It's open, but when? When you gonna open it?
When do you want me to?
Yesterday.
May 1st? Uh, yes, sir, I believe so. Uh, and any, a recommendation right to start with? I'm afraid we're gonna get uh kinda overwhelmed based on the phone calls. Um, I would, if we could, I'd like to open it maybe Thursday, Friday and Saturday, right to start with. Uh, say from eight AM to three PM. That would give us time to handle the material, um, have time to do maintenance on the equipment and all that without, you know, just being completely overwhelmed right.
All right, so you're saying Thursday, Friday, Saturday of next week or this week?
We can do, start this week.
Start this week?
It's, it's up to you.
Yeah, we'll open first and we'll run it through the weekend. If it causes us backup delays, we may have to shut down for a couple of days to get everything caught up, but um we'll keep moving forward.
Mondays will be, be tough on us because we're a little shorthanded on Monday. And if you got, you know, um, material that you need to deal with from Monday still backed up or from uh Friday, Saturday still kinda backed up Monday morning, uh, we need a little bit of time to work that material, get it spread, covered, compacted, um, chipped, whatever.
Is there any particular reason why you can't have your staff out there Monday? You say you're shorthanded? Pay them overtime.
We can do that.
I mean, good gracious, Larry and finance, I know y'all, uh-oh. But, you know, we got to do what we gotta do to try and get you back in the normal cycle.
I'm ready to go, Commissioner, we'll, we'll have them, we'll have them.
And we are having conversations with the, say y'all about the inmates. And we're hoping we get that worked back up.
Okay, well.
What about Sunday, not open, but just let the crew go out there and do maintenance? Sunday afternoon?
Possibly we could.
Volunteer for overtime?
Yeah, maybe voluntold.
Voluntold, I like voluntold.
Yeah. But anyway, we just want to make you aware that um we will be moving forward with opening and getting it, May 1st is a good day to do.
May 1st, thank you, appreciate it.
Coordinate with um Lou and Public Information to make sure that um information is disseminated appropriately. Um, next question we have is, we have a planning meeting that is a QJ meeting scheduled from May the 28th. Next question we have is, we have a planning meeting that is a QJ meeting scheduled from May the 28th. We need to determine, or need you to determine where you want to hold that meeting so we can properly advertise it. We would anticipate it being a meeting similar to this where it's, part of it's live, part of it is Zoom to keep social distancing. So Freedport may be the best logical place for that simply because staff is there. But if you're more comfortable here or South Atlantic, either one, but we're kind of used to this arrangement. So whatever the board would like to do. About right here. Here, we're doing that. Here?
Well, since I live in the South End, I'd rather do it in the South End, but it looked pretty much like I'm out boating.
Good for you to drive, Commissioner. We'll just, we'll do it up here, Larry.
Okay.
And maybe after the end of May, June, then we might be able to get back into our normal routine. Indianapolis. Okay. What else you got, Mr. Jones?
I think that is all. My list kept changing and, but I believe that's all we have.
Okay. What, what's your thoughts about county offices?
We're going to meet either later this week or the first of the week to get some input from all of the directors and managers and we'll probably begin moving forward within the next week or so to restaff and bring folks back together.
All right, before we move into the remainder of the agenda, it was brought up about a contingency plan of the county. Commissioner Nipper, I think that was one thing he wanted to cover. And I ask if he had any comments to bring them forth today that we could put together some type of plan based upon a task force that Mr. Jones is going to try and put together. So Commissioner Nipper, you got the floor?
Well, I'm sure Jeff would have some input and the sheriff, but we need to come up with some, what's, Jeff, what's a logical trigger? I mean, at some point, we need to, if this happens, we need to do this. And some contingency plans that the sheriff knows how to move forward if, if we do have a large outbreak.
Yeah, and that's some of the things that we've been discussing. We're in a preliminary phases with some of this. Now, what we do expect, we do expect the number of cases to rise as we do more widespread testing. The other thing too, to kind of keep in mind, we're using the 1918 pandemic as kind of a model as far as what could potentially happen. There were three distinct phases, or excuse me, waves with the 1918 pandemic. The first wave was in, was in the springtime of 1918. The larger wave, or the largest wave was in the wintertime of 1918, excuse me, the fall of 1918. And then winter of 1919 going into spring of 1919 was another wave that came through. So we're looking at some of those trends and we've been talking, and we're starting to get into some, going to start getting into some specifics as far as what we need to look at, as far as triggers and number of people and resources and things like that based upon what we're going to need to do. If we need to come back and look at some of these, some of these processes again.
So the, basically the relationship between how many become positive, how quickly we're using beds, ventilators, and probably someone from Sacred Heart would definitely have the input along with Health Mark.
And one of the good things about if we see that we are having larger numbers of positives, but still not having deaths, the good thing about that, and Holly can kind of chime in and correct me if I'm wrong, is that's showing that it's a little bit more milder than we initially thought, although it might be a little bit more widespread. So those are some of the things that we'll be looking at. And I know the Epi folks, the epidemiological folks are looking at that and doing all of their contact tracing on that as well.
So do we feel like we need something in place or are we just going to, Holly, your input is very valuable too. Come back and say, we have three more cases, one's on a respirator. I mean, how are we going to?
We can continue to doing the updates that we've been doing, but what we'll do is we'll manage through the EOC some future planning. So if we start looking at specific triggers as far as number of cases, how serious the cases are, are we looking at opening up an alternate care site if our resources become overwhelmed? If we start seeing that our resources are starting to get stretched or could potentially get stretched based on modeling, we'll definitely come back to the commission and let you all know about all that information and start talking about some mitigation steps that we can put into place.
And then we, you and I spoke, another very big trigger that might change a lot of the dynamics, a good old storm out in the Gulf.
Right. And the state has a planning cell that has the county directors involved in on looking at how are we going to operate during a hurricane if we have a pandemic? So we're doing weekly conference calls with the Mass Care Working Group on that. We're talking about that regionally. We do have weekly regional calls. And then also we talk to, I talk to my counterparts pretty much all the time. So we're, that's something that we've been looking at and planning for, for the past four or five weeks.
Mr. Claywell, you got any comments?
I think he pretty much covered it.
All right, Tony?
No, I think, I think that Jeff's on top of it, but I think we need to have that plan in place as quickly as possible. So, and Jeff, please keep all the individual commissioners updated. But, you know, again, this is new to all of us. You have way more emergency management experience than anybody in the room. So, you know, keep us advised on what the plan is, how it's progressing. And we need to move quickly and get some things in place.
Absolutely. And also on another note, we did a tornado survey with National Weather Service on Friday regarding the potential tornado, the possible tornado that came through last Thursday. It was an EF1 tornado. It was a 10-mile-long track. I'll be sending something out to the commissioners as well as some pictures and some drone footage that we took. So I want to let you all know about that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Nick, you got anything?
I'm saying good. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you. Well, Larry, just, we'll figure it out. You let us know, we'll figure it out. Okay. Bear with me a second.
While you're doing that, I would say the trigger can't, it's not one or two cases. I mean, it's, that'd be something. We've had 35 in two months, so.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Claywell, you got anything to add today?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nipper?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nick?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Anderson?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
And I have nothing other than what we've already talked about. All right, now it's time for other public comment, any public comment. Okay, see none in the audience. I see three on the, on the call list here. First one up is call in user three. Call in user three. Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Becky Amshoff, A M S H O F F.
Okay, Ms. Becky, go ahead.
I just want some clarification on the beach activities. You're stating that the vote said those will include walking, jogging, boating, fishing, surfing, paddle boarding, and water sports activities? No sunbathing permitted. Yet you're telling callers they're allowed to bring chairs and umbrellas. How do those fall into those activities? What are you defining as sunbathing?
The common, heck, I don't know, lady. Good gracious. Everybody's getting down.
Well, you got to know because we're depending on you to know.
Yeah, well, you're fixing to hear it from me if that's what you want to hear. Sunbathing is laying.
Okay, well, that's a little rude. I'm just asking a question.
On the beach, that's sunbathing. If you want to sit in a chair, that's up to you.
That doesn't make any sense.
Well, then, I'm sorry, that's the way it is.
But your vote stated that it included specific activities. None of those activities need a chair or an umbrella.
But, Mr. Chairman, most people sunbat, most people bathe in the nude. So if you have your clothes on in a chair, then are you really sunbathing?
I'm glad this is humorous.
Well, never mind. All right, next.
We're trying to get clarification, that's all.
All right. Call legal, they'll tell you about it. Okay, next, JCK, whoever JCK is. JCK, are you there? JCK. I don't hear him. Jim Bagby, Jim Bagby, you there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. And I'm going to echo the last call, all right? When you passed the motion, it was activities. And we talked about exercise. We talked about mental health. We talked about the reason to not allow sunbathing. But when you allow umbrellas or you allow tents or you start allowing chairs, you know, as I said in my previous presentation, allow that starting the 12th and then allow the vendors before Memorial Day. But initially, just allow people to walk on the beach, fish on the beach, jog on the beach, get some exercise and get on the beach. But when you start allowing chairs and you start allowing tents, you say, you know, you might as well just open it up because everybody's going to go down there and camp out. And that's what's going to draw all these out-of-towners to the beach. You know, and that's, that's why I ask, you consider a phased approach to opening up that beach. But if you want to open it wide open, you might as well put sunbathing back in there if you're going to allow chairs, umbrellas, and tents. Towels, nobody sits on a towel anymore. I mean, you know, I haven't done that since 1980. Thank you for your time. And I know this is not easy, but I would ask you to not allow sunbathing, not allow tents or chairs or umbrellas until the 12th. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Take a quick swing. The problem with limiting chairs and stuff like that is, you know, if somebody my age wants to take my grandchildren to the beach and let them swim in the beach, well, I don't want to stand there, so I got to have something to sit down. So I'm too old to get on the sand. I want to sit on a chair. So some of this is just common sense and trying to apply common sense to these situations. There is a difference between sunbathing and sitting, but it's, it's sort of like the Supreme Court said about pornography. It's sort of in the, I can't tell you what it is, but I know what it looks like. That's my stab at it.
All right, next up, Tabitha Marvel. Tabitha Marvel, you there? Okay, identify yourself and spell your last name for the clerk.
Yes, Tabitha Marvel, M A R V E L.
Okay, go ahead.
I am a Walton County resident as well, and I spoke at the last meeting. I do definitely agree with the chairs, if possible, to keep them, having a heart condition and having children of multiple ages, it is important to be able to sit on a beach while your children swim and play. Also to shield yourself from sun for people that do not handle that well, that have work in, medical complications that the sun can actually give them sun poisoning or hurt them. Same with parents that want to take out their children, but maybe have younger children that would like them shielded. I feel that the other children should have that right to play, but the parents as well as maybe younger children should have that right to wear an umbrella so that they can stay shielded and safe. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Dan Sundberg, Dan Sundberg, are you there? Dan Sundberg, are you there? Dan Sundberg, are you there? I don't hear him. All right, that's the last of ones on public comment. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Some of.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Holly.
Goodbye.